Good evening. We're going to call this meeting to order. And Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Stewart in the chair, Councillor Carr. Councillor De Genova is on a leave of absence for civic business. Councillor Frye is also on a leave of absence for civic business. Councillor Swanson. Councillor Hardwick. Councillor Weeb. Councillor Boyle. Councillor Dominado is on a leave of absence for civic business. Councillor Bly. And Councillor Kirby Young is also on a leave of absence for civic business. You have quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. And first, we want to acknowledge that we're on the traditional and unceded territories of the Squamish, Sliwauhtuq and Musqueam nations and thank them for having care for this land and look forward to working with them as we move forward building this great city. I also want to recognize the staff. This never gets old. Love the work that's done here and with the enthusiasm and great quality. So, thank you for everything you do. Just want to recap some reminders that were stated on Tuesday. This is a reconvening of public hearings, so we don't need to vote on going in the committee of the whole again. We successfully failed on that motion. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the reports being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations. And I'll, if you start veering off, I'll just gently nudge you back to this specific project. Speakers may only speak once. Any additional comments can be submitted in writing to publichearing@vancouver.ca. Those speaking on behalf of three or more persons or three or more organizations will have up to eight minutes to speak. The persons or representative of the organization must also be identified for the record and be present and must not be speakers themselves. Finally, if council does not conclude, hearing from all speakers this evening will recess and reconvene the meeting on Wednesday, July 17th at 6:00 PM here in Council Chamber. So, do we have to read the rezoning application again? Just the summary? Okay, go ahead. We'll read the summary.
Since referrals of public hearing, council has received eighty-six pieces of correspondence in support of the application, forty-two pieces of correspondence in opposition to the application, and five pieces of correspondence related to other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to approximately 5:00 PM today.
Thanks very much. And before we go to the speakers list, which we'll start with, I believe, Eileen Rawling, staff have a number of answers to a number of our questions, so they're prepared to per present now. We don't have a chance to question them. This is just information only. We have more chance to ask staff questions later on this evening. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Councillor. Yan Zhang, Senior Resoning Planner. Since the Tuesday's public hearing on this application, staff have heard a few questions from council that we would like to use this opportunity to address them. There have been some questions regarding the DCL that would be collected from this application if it were to approved. How are the DCLs allocated? And how would the 2.4 million in DCL resulting from this application benefit the local neighborhood? DCLs are collected on all applications, on all developments in the city with a few exceptions to help pay for amenity and infrastructure needed to serve residents. The citywide DCL is allocated on a citywide basis towards social housing, transportation and utility, parks, and childcare, the four categories. There is also a separate citywide utility DCL collected on all developments that funds citywide sewer, water, and drainage infrastructure. The delivery mechanism of the community amenity is the capital plan, capital plan process, which is on a four-year cycle, and each individual capital project generally requires council approval. The city used to have a system of small area-specific DCLs whereby funds collected in the area could only be spent in that area. This were collapsed in recent years in favor of a citywide system of DCL that is linked with a citywide capital planning process. There were a number of issues with the small DCL areas, including the constrained ability to deliver, to collect DCL dollars, and in turn, a very slow delivery of public benefit projects within that area. The question, I think this really, this question is really about the local spending of DCL money is really related to comments we've heard from some community members about whether there would be a commensurate provision of services and amenity in the local neighborhood where growth is happening. So, as part of the EVI capital plan process, staff do a review of where population and employment growth have been occurring in the city and strategically plan for amenity provision to help service, serve this growth. For the next capital plan cycle, this review and prioritization work will start in 2021. And the growth that has been experienced by the Fraser Street neighborhood will be subject to that review, as is the growth experienced by the rest of the city. In terms of looking at neighborhoods specifically, in terms of public realm improvements, we have heard that the Fraser Street, Fraser Street may require some improvements such as sidewalks, new crosswalks, and small gathering public space places. In terms of childcare, we have to say that finding suitable sites for childcare continues to be a very big challenge throughout the city, including this neighborhood. But staff will continue to prioritize opportunities to locate childcare facilities on VSB systemic replacement schools in civic projects and as part of private redevelopments. For example, in this neighborhood, there is the Glad Glide Tidying Church site at 3456 Fraser Street that has intent to redevelop its facility, including a thirty-seven space childcare. There is also a new childcare currently under construction in the Fraser Commons development at the corner of Fraser and Southeast Marine Drive. This development will include a new thirty-seven space childcare delivered as an in-kind CAC amenity, as well as a new neighborhood house annex space. And looking forward, there will be a, there will be new childcare spaces delivered as part of the build-out of the Little Mountains site at Thirty-third and Ontario. In terms of local parks, the nearby Robson Park requires enhancement to respond to neighborhood growth and green space needs. For, for the current and future capital plans, staff generally prioritize park acquisition, renewal, and development for higher growth areas where there is identified park deficiency. Acquisition is largely opportunistic, but this neighborhood does have identified deficiency in parks. To help deliver needed services in tandem with growth leading up to the next capital plan review, if council directs us, staff would be happy to engage with local residents, discuss specific needs in their neighborhood. This may translate to local improvement projects in the short term or longer-term capital projects that can be rolled into the next capital plan. A further question was regarding the tree planting strategy for this application. Can I please have this, my slide bring up on the screen, please? There are only five existing trees on site. The application proposes to retain one Western Red Cedar tree at the southwest corner of the site, and that is shown with a red arrow. It's hard to see on this one, it's a ghost outline of a tree. As you can see, this application has proposed seventeen new trees on site. So, you know, they have proposed to put a maximum, maximum amount of new trees as part of the development. In terms of amenity space, a condition of approval is included to improve the amenity space, including expanding outdoor amenity space on the rooftop, providing a minimum of approximately 1,000 square feet of indoor space and approximately 1,400 square feet of outdoor space. Those are minimum. There were, there were some comments about the possibility of adding a heritage component by incorporating signage into the design. This is certainly possible. Signage commemorating Alex Automotive on the site would be a great way to commemorate the history of the site. In addition, there is a 200K public art contribution as part of this rezoning proposal. Moving forward, it is possible to involve local community in coming up with creative ideas to use art on site to reflect local identity. And I would like to provide some clarification on the commercial space at Gray, since there was a lot of this discussion about that on Tuesday. A total of 11,000 square feet of a commercial space is proposed. Of this, there is about 8,000 square feet on the ground floor, as shown on the, on the landscape plan, where, with three CRU proposed, so three commercial retail units proposed. The rest of the floor space is mezzanine space that will only be built by prospective tenants if they need them. So, due to the townhouse proposed at the lane, the depth of this commercial use is similar, is smaller than typical retail spaces and therefore very conducive to small local-serving retailers. Based on our longstanding policies on local-serving commercial spaces in our neighborhood centers, the maximum CRU frontage for local-serving business would be fifty feet, and this proposal has four frontage, each is about thirty-five feet. So, this ensures a fine-grained pedestrian scale at the street. So, I wanted to say that given the challenges of retail lease currently in this area, as well as the need and challenges of locating businesses such as like a neighborhood green grocer in our local neighborhoods, staff would recommend not restricting the size of the CRU in the proposal, in our current approval condition, in order to allow maximum flexibility of tenancy. The last question I will cover is there are some school, VSB school capacity questions. So, we did receive a memo from VSB, and I forward that to clerks, and hopefully that will be circulated to mayor and council. We do want to clarify some questions with regards to whether this is a seven-story or six-story building, and then whether this fits into the Fraser Street context. And to answer that is Paul Chang, Senior Development Planner.
Thank you, Yan. I think I just wanted to have this opportunity to perhaps talk about the overall built form that this particular application is introducing. And I'd like to do it in two parts, the front of the building and the back of the building. And what I can do is basically offer some, some thinking that the Development Planning Division has about, about our streets in Vancouver and the future context that we might be able to land on. With respect to how this building responds to Fraser Street, I wanted to point out a couple of interesting facts. There's a, there's another street in Paris called Boulevard Saint Michel that has the exact same width of this part of Fraser Street. It's a hundred feet wide. It also has a lot of historic buildings on either side of approximately seventy-five feet in height on either side, and that is a continuous street wall of seventy-five feet on either side, separated by a 100-foot-wide right-of-way. What's interesting about Fraser is that it is also a north-south street, just like Boulevard Saint Michel is. What's also interesting is that Paris is on the almost exact same latitude as Vancouver. So, the pathway of the sun in Paris is the same way, same pathway of the sun in Vancouver during the various different seasons and during various different times. This particular street in Paris, oh, one more thing, Paris also has gloomy winters like Vancouver. It's rainy and it's kind of gray and foggy. If this street in Paris actually shows us that it's quite tolerable for the citizenry to be able to walk along that street and experience it, then it kind of informs our division that a north-south street with the same width could probably take a continuous street wall of sixty-five to seventy-five feet in height. Now, I just want to state that this particular project is just one block. It's not the entire run of all of Fraser. Previous to this particular, previously, this, this particular property, or currently, is zoned RT2, which is only allowing duplexes, which we could argue from a city growth point of view is a little bit underwhelming compared to, say, something like Paris. So, I just wanted to provide that kind of knowledge so that everyone has an idea if we're talking about whether or not this building form and this building height is too much for Vancouver, just wanted to provide a particular context for us to think in. The other part I want to talk about was the back and how this particular form responds to the single-family properties located across the lane. I can recall that we had a rental 100 project here in council, maybe only about six months, six weeks ago to two months, where a councillor asked the question to staff, is this six- or seven-story kind of a height too abrupt of a transition down to the single-family located across the lane? And to that answer, to that, I can only answer, it depends. For that particular rental 100, the answer that staff gave was, we hadn't heard from any of the nearby residents that they thought that this was too much. Now, that's a very relative statement in the sense that you can have the exact same form in another neighborhood, and you'll hear from a lot of residents that it actually is too much. So, I'll let you think about that for a second. But what I really want to stress is, staff have, on a case-by-case basis, been dealing with this particular abrupt transition, or the perception of abrupt transition on all of these particular applications. And it's primarily because these rezoning policies were crafted as a very, very emergency fix for the, for the housing problems that we have in the city right now. So, it only concentrates itself on the arterials. It doesn't speak about any rezoning opportunities outside of the arterials across the service lane or two blocks away or anything like that. We have found that when we have a rezoning in an area that has, has had a full community plan done, there is a lot more predictability for the property owners to have, and they find that, they find that a lot more appeasing to them, and they understand when something's being upzoned that they actually have other options that the plan has brought in for their properties. And there is this sense that there's this overall intentionality to the, to the urban form that will be resulting piece by piece, brick by brick. I think I can just leave it at that for all of you. I hope that was helpful for you.
Thank you. I think next in line is Dan Garrison.
Hi, thank you. Dan Garrison from Housing Policy and Regulation Division in Planning. So, there were a couple of questions that came up that I was gonna, I was asked to touch on. One is whether the project meets the affordability and innovation criteria of the Affordable Housing Choices policy. And the second is a question about why there's no land lift that would generate a CAC here. In terms of the first question, the Affordable Housing Choices rezoning policy was brought in in 2012, coming out of the Mayor's Task Force on Housing Affordability at the time. And it provides for the ability to rezon for additional height and density in specific locations, and there's a map in the, in the report where that's possible, including, and this does, this site does obviously fall within the areas that are allowed to rezon under that policy. The way the policy works in terms of affordability is it identifies, it bullets out for specific things that we can consider rezoning for. One of those is, is for projects where 100% of the residential floor area is rental. So, that, this, this project would meet that criteria in that 100% of the residential floor area in the project being proposed is, is rental tenure. The other types of projects that we can consider that are looking for innovation or looking for innovative forms of tenure, so, under this policy, we've also considered, for example, seniors' life lease projects, we've considered cohousing projects. I would note that of all the kinds of projects we've considered under the Affordable Housing Choices interim rezoning policy, the projects where 100% of the residential density is rental are the most affordable projects. They are the ones that are affordable to households with the, with the lowest incomes compared to the other types of projects. In terms of this project and the answer related to CACs, for many of the projects that we look at under our rental incentive programs, particularly those that come in under the rental 100 program, those, many of them come in in the C2 zoning district. For those projects that go up to six stories, we've never seen a project that generates a CAC, and so, in fact, in those categories, we've actually exempted them from the CAC policy, so we don't even look at them. In this case, I think there was a good question raised by council around this being an RT2 zone site, so a lower-density site than the base density that exists in the C2 zoning district, which does allow about a two-and-a-half FSR condominium project. So, in this case, because the RT2 underlying zoning is of a lower density, staff in housing and in real estate services had a very detailed look at the pro forma in this project. We did go through it with the applicant. We did look at whether we could achieve any additional affordability, whether we could secure any CACs. And because both of the high construction costs that are, that are present right now, because of the inclusion of retail space, which does not create additional value in the project, in fact, it's a bit of a difficult financial piece to the project, and because, of course, they aren't opting for waiving of DCLs, they are paying just about two-and-a-half million dollars in development cost levies, the project did not generate any increased land value, at least not to the point at which we would consider a community amenity contribution to be payable. So, there, it was within the acceptable range of, of profit margin that we usually measure projects with, where we look at the ability to assess a community amenity contribution. So, I think I will leave it there. Thank you.
Sorry, is that it for information from staff? Looks like it. Is that it? Okay, thanks very much. Okay, so, thank you very much for that information, and now we're going to move on to hearing the remainder of speakers. I have number nine on the list, Eileen Rawling. Eileen Rawling here. Okay. How about Lucas Barube? Thanks. You have up to five minutes. There might be questions afterwards, and there's a timer right beside you there.
Okay.
Excellent.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks very much for the opportunity to speak this evening in support of this rezoning application by Strand Development. My name is Lucas Barube. I live in East Vancouver, and I also work here in the city as a Senior Development Manager with Rise Alliance Properties, a local developer. We currently have two market rental projects proposed under rental 100 and rezoning approvals. Both are located in the Fraser-Kingsway area. So, I, just having disclosed that, I'm speaking today in support of this project as both a Vancouverite who believes that rental housing of all kinds plays a very important role in the health and vibrancy of our city, and also as a member of the development industry who can hopefully provide a little bit of insight into purpose-built rental housing and sort of some of the challenges, challenges that we're facing in, in delivering this type of built form currently. So, as you know, Housing Vancouver is the city's very well-thought-out tenure housing strategy. It sets both annual and tenure housing targets for different housing typologies. Meeting these annual goals is essential to ensuring that the housing built over the next decade is, is the right supply and supports both the diversity of incomes and households. As you also likely know, we're falling well short, and, you know, I say, I use "we" because I think it really is a responsibility of both the development community and the city and staff to make sure that these targets are met. So, we're falling well short of meeting these, these purpose-built rental targets with only 52% of the annualized 2,000-unit target approved in 2018. I don't have the exact figures for the number of units approved to date in 2019, but I believe it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 300 as of the end of June, so significantly lower. This project proposes 120 unit, 121 units of purpose-built rental housing, which would achieve approximately 6% of the annual target, and it also includes 51 family units. So, if approved, this project will contribute to meeting both the 2019 purpose-built rental targets and also the objective of delivering a diversity of housing for families. The additional height and density available to these types of projects under the Affordable Housing Choices interim zoning policy are obviously essential tools to incentivizing the development of rental housing. However, even with these incentives, market rental is becoming increasingly challenging to deliver. So, I totally understand that kind of the last thing that anybody in this current climate of affordability wants to hear is developers gripe about pro forma hardships. So, instead, I'll just quickly quote from a report prepared for the city of New Westminster by Coriolis Consulting Corporation, which I believe is the same consultancy that has been engaged by staff to analyze rental policies in the city of Vancouver. I'm not 100% sure, but I think that's correct. So, in their financial analysis of the city of New Westminster's affordable housing policies, Coriolis states, "The financial viability of rental apartment development is marginal under current market conditions. The financial performance of rental development has been negatively impacted over the past year or so by a number of factors. Because of these challenges in the market and to government policy, rental projects now require increased density to be financially viable, even compared to earlier in 2019." So, that, that corroborates some of Mr. Garrison's earlier statements. On Tuesday night, sorry, I'm going to speed up here. "On Tuesday night, some of the people opposed to this project seemed fixated on the proposed rentals rate of $2,000 for a one-bedroom, stating that at those rates, this project would not be affordable to people in their community. I'm not here to debate their math, their understanding of current market rental rates in the city of Vancouver, or the semantics of affordability. I think that that debate is playing out adequately online. What I do take issue with is the notion that projects built in a community should only serve people currently living in that community. To me, that's really not in the spirit of inclusivity. I also think it's important to note that housing supply is a continuum, and new market rental is an important component of that continuum. The units in this project will be affordable to some individuals and families who live and work in our city, and will ease the pressure on older rental stock and provide viable alternatives to privately-owned units with last tenure security." I'm not saying anything new there. Finally, I know that there are a few projects along Fraser Street currently in the approvals process, and I empathize that neighborhood change can sometimes be challenging for those living there. In fact, on Tuesday night, during the public hearing for 1166 Melville, council heard the concerns voiced by several residents of a neighboring condo building. And in response, councillor Frye told an anecdote about living in a warehouse on Pender 20 years ago. And if I'm correctly interpreting his anecdote, it's that, you know, downtown Vancouver is a dynamic place and change is constant. So, I guess my question to council would be, is it only residents of downtown Vancouver who have to accept change? Should residents living in predominantly single-family neighborhoods be exempt? Presumably, councillor Frye and the other members of council who voted in favor of the project weighed the benefits to the city of over 350,000 square feet of new job space against negative impacts perceived by neighboring residents. And so, I would really urge mayor and council to look at this project through the same cost-benefit lens.
And thanks very much. That's it, five minutes.
Yeah, that's it.
Thanks for coming in tonight. You do have a question from councillor Weeb.
Yeah, thanks for coming in today. You talked about you've got two rental 100 projects coming. Did you look at the interim rezoning policy for affordable housing, the one that this one's currently under?
In this case, both are C2-zoned, and so, they fit much better under the rental 100 policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have you, has your company looked at doing this type of policy? Because obviously, this is one we're seeing a little bit more. I'm just wondering if you have.
We've, I mean, I'm, sorry, I, I know that we, we have. I mean, it's, it's not really my role to look at acquisitions, but I know that we have. We've, we've looked at potential single-family land assemblies along Fraser and 25th. I'm not sure where their goals are currently at in, in our process, but I could certainly get back to you on that.
That's fine. Thank you very much.
Councillor Kirby Young?
Hi, speaking to this specific project, over here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Speaking to this specific project, because, which is what we need to focus on, but in your kind of sort of professional opinion, knowing what you know of the site and you're here, so you're obviously familiar with the site. so you're obviously familiar with the application, does this seem a reasonable density in order to deliver rental based on the financial realities about doing that in this market?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I'm not privy to what these guys pay for their land or the interworkings of their pro forma. I can kind of only speak to my own knowledge. And yeah, absolutely. Like, I know with the projects that we're working at, like, they really are quite marginal, and to receive an FSR of around 3.5, 3.6, it really is essential to make these projects work.
Okay. And in terms of public amenities and looking at the site, does that also seem, for the specific site, does that seem sort of reasonable in terms of what we can achieve? Because there's always a balance between quality of where people are living and trying to make the projects actually work, right?
Yeah, of course. And again, sorry, I'll state that I'm not, I'm obviously not privy to their financials, but...
No, it's just your opinion as it relates to this.
In looking at our own projects, you know, we've seen construction costs go up 25% since we acquired one of the pieces of land that's further along in the rezoning process in October 2017. So, and in that same time, we've also seen rental rates flatten out, which is obviously great for the city, but it's really, really challenging for the financial metrics of these projects when you have, you know, call it 70% of the cost of a project, which are your hard costs going up 25%. So in this case, I really have to say, I mean, it would be amazing if we could provide below-market rents, and we could contribute to the community and sort of still receive baseline profit in order to get lending from banks, right? But I just, unfortunately, just really don't see the room in these projects.
Okay. Appreciate the perspective. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks very much. And that's it for questions for you. So thanks for coming in.
Thanks very much.
We have number 11, Stefan Krapikovich. Krapikovich? Okay. Thanks very much. Up to five minutes.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks very much for having me here tonight. My name is Stefan Krapikovich, coming to speak to you in support of the project. I'll tell you a little bit about myself and then the perspective that I'm bringing to this. About seven years ago, I started a little technology business here in Vancouver, and then about five years ago, sold it to Hootsuite, and have been working at Hootsuite for the last five years or so as a vice president. One of the dynamics that hasn't really been raised, I was here on Tuesday night and listened to all the speakers, is one of the dynamics that hasn't really been brought, is what is it like to run a business in Vancouver and trying to attract top talent like engineers and salespeople and marketers to a city where they can't afford to rent the apartments? And so when you have cities like San Francisco and Toronto increasing the supply of rental units at an incredible rate, it's very hard as a technology company to attract top talent, keep top, top talent, and grow a business in Vancouver. And so the sort of thesis and idea that I'm bringing here is that, as a city, we need to be increasing supply of rental units so that a city like ours can grow and foster and build great technology companies and build amazing companies where have high-paying jobs, and you can support a family, and you can send your kids to school. I heard a lot of concerns about, is there enough room for kids? Well, I think that's a really great problem for us to solve. I would love to solve that problem. I would love to bring more people to this city. I would love for great, smart, innovative people to come to Vancouver, but they just can't afford to live here. And if they can't afford to live here, we're not going to create great companies in this city. And so that's sort of what the perspective that I wanted to bring here. I also wanted to say that I'm a resident in that community. I live in that community. I've lived there for the past number of years, and I was super disappointed to hear Don Davies' remarks. I just want to make sure that council knows he was not speaking for all constituents. I'm a constituent in that community. I live in that community, and I'm very supportive of projects like this that will bring affordable housing to great people who can come and create companies and work for companies here in Vancouver. So that's all I've got to say.
Thanks very much. And you have a question from councillor Bly.
Hi there. Thanks very much for being here. You touched on something interesting, which wasn't dissimilar to Mr. Davies' point he was making too. And I think it's important we don't get caught up in this affordability conversation, although it's very important, but for this particular project, and we're in a public hearing process, we're talking about availability and the amount of units that this particular project will put back on them, or will put on the market, the rental market, that don't currently exist. So my question back to you is more around, this will increase availability options. It's not going to tackle affordability at all. So I think that's just a really important distinction. So my question is, do you have talent that you would like to bring to the city based on what you pay your employees that will be able to afford to live here?
For sure. People can, its availability is a massive issue. There isn't, there is not enough units, and there's not enough units that are at a decent market rent. You're seeing, you know, I have an investment condo in Strathcona, you're just seeing, and I was actually just showing it this afternoon, you're seeing so many people come to these open houses and people willing to pay incredible amounts of money to live close to the city. You know, we just need to increase the supply. That's the bottom line. There needs to be more rental units available, and they need to be at market, they need to be at market rent so that companies can grow. You're going to have companies just moving to other cities if we don't increase the availability and supply of rental units close to the city.
So what I'm hearing you say, and how many people do you employ at Hootsuite?
Here in Vancouver, we employ about 600 people.
Okay. And their average salaries would afford them to be able to live in a building like this?
I would say so. I'm not here speaking on behalf of Hootsuite tonight.
No, I know, but you are a major employer in the city.
Yeah, we are. But to answer your question, a typical salary at Hootsuite would allow you to live in a rental unit like this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Bly. I just put myself on the list here. I had some questions just about salary, because we hear a great debate around median, the median income in the area. And so what the median is, is like the halfway point. So the median income in that area for families is, I don't know, $60,000, $70,000 a year. So maybe, you know, government subsidy helps with the lower end of that market, but there's also the whole other half of the neighborhood that's making above that. So I was just following on councillor Bly's question about, can you give us a sense of, like, what tech workers are paid in the city?
Yeah, so there's a variety of different type of tech workers, right? So, and, you know, in a technology company, one of the most highly sought-after skills is people who are building the software. We call them engineers or developers. And so, you know, salary range there can be anywhere from sort of $80,000 a year up to $200,000 a year. And so that just depends on your skill set and how long you've been in the business and whether or not you're a manager of people or not. So there's a huge, huge range, but, you know, it would be, it's, you know, somewhere in that range.
And my read is that every single one of those people could find a place in this building at the rents we've been quoted.
At the rents you've been quoted, I heard the numbers, the CMHC numbers, which are consistent to the rental that I have, a one-bedroom suite that I was renting in Strathcona today, it's around $2,000 square a month. Then those workers would 100% be able to live in this development, but they couldn't afford to buy. And that's the huge, that's the huge difference, is that you, you know, they can't come to a city and afford a $1 million condo or $1.5 million house, but they can afford $2,000 in rent, that's for sure.
Okay. Thanks very much for coming in and sharing your information.
For sure. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Speaker 12 has been withdrawn. Speaker 13 is Adam Gailey. Speaker 14 is withdrawn. Martina Lee, though, is number 15. Gailey, perhaps?
Gailey.
Gailey, okay. Sure. Clerks will grab those for you? Did you just want to go ahead while we're handing those out? Okay.
You will have seen those before, but just good for reference. Thank you, mayor and council. Good evening. My name is Adam Gailey. I'm a neighbor. We need more housing in this city, but this is not the right project. Just to strengthen some statements from some of my neighbors before, how this property is on a ridge. The elevation difference between this location and one block either east or west is nine meters or 30 feet. So while this building, as proposed, is 70 feet high, if you add that 30 feet, this is a 100-foot-high building from those vantage points, which is roughly a 10-story building. So when we're talking about rezoning under a policy that allows six-story buildings, from a block away, this will have the presence of a 10-story building. But to continue, the city of Vancouver needs to recover from a crisis of confidence in its leadership and direction. It recently brought about the replacement of the last council in the election last year. As the current council, you have a responsibility to rebuild the trust in this city, and approving this building does not help that. So first, trust is built by admitting when we were wrong and doing the right thing. The Affordable Housing Choices interim rezoning policy was bad policy when introduced in 2012 and continues to be. I'd be happy to detail that if asked. The council at the time appears to have been aware, it seems to have been aware it was poor policy, and wrote in an expiration date. While the policy's already expired, this building will persist if it's allowed. By denying tonight's rezoning, you have an opportunity to minimize the damage of this poorly-considered policy. Trust is built through respect. The reference policy expressly ignores the interests of homeowners and residents of neighboring sites. No messaging from the city beyond "deal with it" is present. Good city planning does not allow a seven-story or even six-story building separated by only a 20-foot right-of-way from land limited to a single-family home form and density. No current policy softens this reality in this location if this rezoning is approved. I'll ask you how approving this building is consistent with demonstrating respect for local community and by proxy, other communities in the city. Trust is built through fairness. On June 25, you rejected a rezoning for a 3.5-story townhouse complex at 4575 Granville Street that was inconsistent with the single-family home character of the neighborhood. As quoted in the Vancouver Courier, Hardwick said the project didn't meet the litmus test of obtaining community support. Not every community is as enabled and resourced to present an opposition as effectively as Shaughnessy is. Should we be penalized for this? While council blesses some neighborhoods with comprehensive plans taking into account the entire community, the proposed building on the 3,800 block of Fraser Street makes no attempt to work with its neighbors, nor is it required to do so. I'll ask you how you fairly consider and value the diverse neighborhoods and communities of Vancouver. Most importantly, trust is built through consistency. In 2015, the city of Vancouver acted to prevent developers from skipping floor numbers containing the numeral four in new developments, as was increasingly common in buildings marketed in Asia. The city appropriately explained that safety considerations of non-sequential floor numbering provided its rationale. To quote chief building official Pat Ryan via the Vancouver Sun, "The problem here is everyone has grown up with numbers that go in sequence. Under stress, emergency responders have a chance of making mistakes. Under pressure, you'll simply count because that's what you've grown up your entire life. The moment you start second-guessing yourself and start asking, is that the fourth, fifth, or sixth floors? It gets very confusing. It isn't about culture or ethnic beliefs, it's about safety considerations," Ryan said. As proposed, the subject building will read 1, mezzanine, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 in its stairwells. This evokes the same confusion Ryan describes. Floor labeling of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 must be required here to stay consistent with the only legitimate rationale for the city's floor labeling directive and to prevent making a mockery of your chief building official. I ask if you will consistently hold new developments to sequential floor labeling. However you respond, the proposed building has seven full-height vertically delineated, non-overlapping above-ground residential floors. I'll ask what precedent you intend to set before the developers and people of Vancouver by considering a seven-floor building under a policy that allows buildings up to a maximum of six stories. I'd note that the six-story building is, the six-story limit is the one and only specified build form criterion directed by the referenced interim policy. This proposal violates each and every form of development criteria set out in the applicable policy.
Thanks very much. Any have some questions? Councillor Carr, please go ahead.
Yes. Thanks so much, Mr. Gailey. I appreciate you coming out tonight. You made a point earlier in your presentation, which said you were looking at the housing program that came through in 2012 and said if, you know, that you had concerns with it, there were shortcomings with it, but didn't elaborate. So I wonder if you could elaborate on those.
It's very vague. It specifies one aspect of build form: floors. That's it. It doesn't specify relation to the neighboring community. It doesn't specify appropriateness to the neighboring community. It doesn't, it doesn't consider the needs of the people in Vancouver beyond, in a rushed emergency path, try to produce additional housing that could be produced through more comprehensive approaches that consider entire communities and context.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Dejanova?
Thank you very much. And before I begin, just a point of parliamentary procedure, and that's, I know we have a number of speakers, so just to set the bar high tonight, I think that there were some comments about our staff that may be bordered on the line of maybe a little bit disrespectful. So I just ask you, Mr. Mayor, maybe to caution all speakers about that?
Sure. I was listening intently, and I thought we were close, but not quite there, so...
So was I. I just thought if we're setting the bar for the whole evening, and instead of talking about one particular person, I didn't want to call a point of order. Specifically, thank you very much for coming out again this evening, and I was listening on my way here. It's great with technology these days. I, I'm wondering, you had talked about respect and respectful neighborhoods. Do you not feel like our current public hearing process is respectful? There's a chance for the public to participate in open houses? There's a notification? In fact, we have people come to council wishing that there was robust consultation on every item like there is on public hearing for some of our council items. So I'm just, I was going to ask you about that.
Yes, listening, I think there's great listening. I don't believe there is great respect. Respecting the interests of the local neighbors is considering how this impacts them and applying some sort of policy that mitigates that impact. Upzoning the surrounding area so that it is appropriate adjacent to a seven-story building would be one approach. Applying this as part of a greater context so that the whole neighborhood is considered instead of approaching a meeting with an appropriate interest to attempt to pass the projects that get here. Things have made it this far. It's a shame to deny projects at this stage, and I can appreciate that. This is the avenue for us as residents to present concerns, and as I see it right now, it comes down to who can scream the loudest. And that is not a respectful situation. I would like to see the city establishing robust policy and then following that robust policy.
Did you participate in the open house, if I may ask?
I did attend the pre-development open house for this building.
Okay. And before public hearing, were you able to share your comments?
I was not able to for this building, no.
So just because you weren't sure how to share your comments, I'm trying to understand how you might feel about the process in consideration of that?
Because unlike residents of some neighborhoods, I work full-time. My wife works full-time. We have two kids to take to daycare and school outside of the neighborhood because there are no spaces in the neighborhood, and we don't have a lot of time to devote to this.
I completely get it. That was one of the things that I'd mentioned, is even in the evenings here, it's hard for people to get here. I'm happy we livestream it. I'd like to see increased participation. So thank you for your comments on that. On the housing side, I mean, you've shared that you have a young family. Looking at this project, I'm only allowed to talk about this project specifically, but this in the neighborhood, is it the specific massing that you have an issue with? Is it just a site? Is this something you would support somewhere else in your neighborhood?
Yes, there's a six-story building proposed at, I believe, Fraser between 18th and 19th that seems very respectful to me. There's another on Kingsway, half a block west of Fraser, also six stories. It seems very respectful and appropriate. There's lots of locations, both in the neighborhood I live in and in the city in general, that can support additional housing. This particular site, disregarding the policies that it's applied under, is not one of them.
And do you see a clear difference between this project and those two you referenced?
Yes. Those do not violate the policies that allow them.
Okay. But specifically, is there, I mean, in your, is there one tangible portion about a detail that you could point to? Just so that I can try and understand your point of view.
They are applied under policies that allow six-story buildings, and they are six-story buildings. This is a policy that allows six-story buildings as its only acceptance criterion, and by any realistic measure, this is a seven-story building. That does not garner... That does not garner trust when the city doesn't follow its own established policy.
Okay. So you, you don't support seven, you, you support the six-story policy, but you wouldn't support seven stories in your neighborhood? Is that what I'm hearing you say? I, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Maybe, maybe seven stories could work, but to push this through under a throwing our hands in the air and we don't have time to do things in an open way, but we just have to approve this however we can, does not inspire confidence.
And we're just at the five minutes. Thanks very much. Counselor Hardwick.
Hi there. So you agree that we need more rental housing?
Absolutely.
What we've heard is that the, you know what a pro forma is?
I'm a bit of a neophyte, but I'll learn.
It's how you make the numbers work. And it's, you know, the land costs this much, the building materials and, and labor costs this much, and then hopefully there's some profit on the, the top of that that makes the whole exercise worthwhile. So what we heard was that in order to make the numbers work, this is the form of development that they need. So that's the real challenge that we have. Now, notwithstanding the fact that, you know, whether we agree or not with the policy, until it's overturned, it exists, and they've spent a lot of time and money, I'm sure, getting it to this point. So I'm sure that you then can understand the, the complexities of the decision-making process that we're going through.
Absolutely. It's complex. I, I don't think this is easy. I think that's why we've elected professionals to this role. What I do wonder is how we as a city can attempt to approve a building under a policy that doesn't allow it. Is there a policy that allows us to discount a floor when counting the floor count in this building? That is the one criterion for build form acceptance under this policy.
So you're saying if this were six stories and not seven stories, that would be okay with you?
I wouldn't be particularly happy about it, but my trust issues would not be the basis of my complaint.
So you're, you're not saying, because I, I think it's often presented that the people in the neighborhood are against any change and nobody wants anything built, they want everything to stay the same. That's clearly not the case, correct?
There, there are lots of great buildings going up in my neighborhood. It's a vibrant neighborhood, it's exciting. I love to see the change in the city, including in my own neighborhood.
So you've pointed out that it's a ridge, and, and I think we can see from the, from the scale model here. I'm not sure if, if the actual ridge as represented here is on the right scale.
Okay. Just the speaker, please, and the questions from council. Thank you.
But I'm, I'm taking your point that it is larger. So overall, your, your complaint is that you don't feel that there was, was adequate, adequate consideration of neighborliness in the way that the project was developed, and that if it was in a form that was a little bit, you know, that was conforming with, in the six stories, it would be acceptable to the neighborhood?
The, the basis of my argument is that I want to see a city government that follows its own procedures, and, and that will allow me to trust my government. Passing this under a procedure that, under a policy that doesn't allow it tells me that this government does not respect its own policies. It tells the developers of this city that this city does not respect its own policies. It creates an environment where every project is considered as a one-off, further creating additional work for council, for developers, for everyone involved to pass additional buildings, and makes it a longer process and a more expensive process to approve new housing in this city.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Counselor Dominado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you. It's Mr. Gally?
Yes.
Did I get it right? I've been listening online as you came here, so I just wanted to have a couple of follow-up questions just around the point of planning, recognizing as you indicated, this policy came in in 2012. We're about to embark on a citywide plan, and as I understand it from the previous citywide planning process, there was a number of pieces of work started, including vision statements, and then in some neighborhoods, there's full plans. In the context of this neighborhood, not necessarily having a formal neighborhood plan, but having a vision statement, do you see that as something we should be referring to as some guidance in terms of, because I seem to recall it, it articulates the value of having diverse housing as well as on arterials specifically, and I'm just curious if that should be, in your view, something we should be looking to?
Vision statement's wonderful. I mean, absolutely, the hierarchy is vision, policy, action. And so the policy should follow a vision statement, the action should follow the policies.
Okay. And, but what I'm hearing from your perspective is you don't see this as a fit, this particular project development.
So that's not really what I was speaking to as I spoke, but I, apart from what I've been saying, I, I do think that this is not an appropriate fit for this location. As, as my neighbors and I have said, the ridge that this is on top of, the overshadowing, the looming effect of a large building on this site is outstated compared to almost any other site I can think of in the city of Vancouver. And I'm, I'm trying not to be hyperbolic here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And that's it for questions. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
We have Martina Lee, number 15, then followed by number 17, Ben Mortensen. Martina Lee? Thanks. Up to five minutes, and you might have questions.
Hello. My name is Martina Lee, and I'd like to thank the councillors and your worship and city staff for this opportunity to provide comments on the proposed development. I am here not as a member of the real estate industry, but as a resident of this neighborhood. My home is three houses down from the proposed site on the east side, and when our previous speaker talked about the sloping that happens, I could currently attest to that. I stand at the base of East 22nd Carolina Street, and Carolina is only one block west of Fraser. I cannot see Fraser, I cannot even see the entryway into the alleyway that's going to be separating the new proposed house from the neighborhood. I'm also a member of the Fraser Street Neighborhood Coalition, and I'd like to also repeat what Dawn Davies talked about. I'm not against development. I moved into the neighborhood approximately seven years ago. I knew that development was going to be inevitable, and I actually welcome it. I'd really like to see more pedestrian traffic along Fraser Street, commercial interests, but this building, this proposed building is not the right one for its site, and that's primarily because of the location of it being on, not only at the cress of Fraser Street, but also the cress of East 22nd. It's looming, it is going to be looking into all of my neighbors' backyards, being at seven. I would like to see it actually being at four stories, but I understand that under the new affordability act that it could allow to six, and I have some comments about that, too. But I also like to say that I am a landlord in my housing. I've had my tenant there for five years, and my rent, which includes all amenities and considered a very upscale suite, is certainly not anywhere near the rents that's being proposed because of market rate. And last night, when I did a bit of research on Craigslist about what rent is being available in my neighborhood, it's interesting, all the new developments that are being marketed by marketing companies that provide rentals are in the markets that Strandhead had talked about, and the ones that are being proposed by people who live in the neighborhood are substantially less. The rent I charge for my unit, that has all the amenities for a 500-square-foot, one-bedroom apartment, is $1,570. That includes all utilities. The one, another one that I saw last night was for a 450-square-foot, one-bedroom, including all utilities, was also $1,450. So my concern is also about affordability. By bringing in these units, it's actually going to drive up rent elsewhere. We also noticed a part of the coalition, too, that there's still many, many Airbnb units that are available, so if those could also be freed up and truly regulated by the city, that's going to also free up more rent, more rental units. So my primary concern, in opposition to what's being proposed, because I would like to see development along Fraser Street, is that this is being viewed in isolation for what else is being happening on Fraser Street. We need to look at things as a whole and not just this one in isolation. We, the coalition has also asked for a community plan to be developed along Fraser Street, and certainly we heard from the senior planner tonight that having a community plan, it will give some certainty, it will give us some visibility into what could be happening, and that's what we're also asking for. On Tuesday, Counselor DeGenova talked about how when we build these units, we could expect return happening about 25 years from now, and so that we know that the affordability might not be there, but in the future it can be. So obviously, this is going to be a long game. We talked about how the development is going to take about four years to go forward on that. To pause this development at this time in order for us to develop a citywide plan for this community would not be, in, in relative to what is going to be proposed, and what's relative to be when we are going to see the benefits, it's not misaligned with what the residents are also asking for. One of the things I'd also like to talk about is the separation, I attended all the open houses, provided comments on them. Interestingly, even though there was a summary that was provided about what the feedback was, each time it went, it seemed the comments that came in from the city, from the residents, or at least from my neighbors, didn't really get proposed. From open house number two to what's being proposed now, there's substantial differences in the building, especially transition from what is the building now to what we're getting. And for example, the, under open house two, what was proposed was community gardens on the northwest corner of the property that was going to be at ground level. That would allow some transition from the, the new building to the, to what the residents are, certainly from my neighbor Lynn, but that's now being proposed, and what is now is tall walls, that's going to be really separating a really tall building from the low-rise residents that are on the west side of that. I'm also a big proponent for community. I don't want to see a divide between what we have, between the new tenants who are going to be moving in, and what the neighborhood. We need to figure out a way, it's not an easy, but there are better options to figure out how we could come out with a development that will integrate the people that we want to be our neighbors, new families and new people who can't afford all the ways, to be part of our neighborhood, and not to create the animosity that I think that we saw earlier on Tuesday, and that's certainly where there's strong emotions that are in play.
Thanks very much. We've got some questions from Counselor Swanson and Counselor DeGenova. Go ahead, Counselor Swanson.
Thanks for coming in.
Could you just move your mic a little closer to your, thanks.
My mouth a little closer to my mic.
Whichever works for you.
Yeah, thank you. So how close do you live to this proposed development?
I am three houses away.
Right.
Yes.
And you have, do you have a basement suite?
No, I don't have a basement suite. Mine is a renovated Vancouver special, and my suite is on the ground floor. It's 550 square feet. It's, it also has a separate legal address.
Okay. So say, take the area like within two blocks circumference of the proposed project.
Yes.
How many rentals, secondary rental suites do you think are in that area?
I think there's quite a few.
Yeah. Like, most houses would have them?
I think that most houses, if they don't have secondary rental suites, they, my neighbors, who are not the one that's immediately west of me, but the two that are down, that are on, two up from Carolina, they are also Vancouver specials, and what I have noticed is that they actually rent out each room separately. So those are not secondary suites, but they are still rental units.
Yeah, okay. I, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Counselor DeGenova.
Thanks so much. I wasn't going to ask a question, but then you had, you'd mentioned what I had shared about my knowledge of where housing sort of begins to get more affordable. But if, you also mentioned pressing pause on that. So if we press pause for a year, two years, then it's 27 years down the road, or, well, I mean, if we talk about the build-out of this, I mean, we're already there. So do you, do you, are you saying that we shouldn't be building anything like this right now? Because I worry about in 25 years, just, just from some of your comments, and I very much appreciate them, and, and listened intently in the context of, of your experience as a neighbor, but I'm just wondering, I mean, we've heard from people also during this hearing that have said every neighborhood needs to, I mean, we shouldn't be putting this, this type of housing, and I agree with that, all in one neighborhood, it should be throughout the city, and, and we have to consider each neighborhood separately, but then this in the context of building housing in our city. So, I mean, I can only ask you about this specific project, but do, do you see an issue with sort of what that may bring in the future? And if not, can I ask you, like, how instead should we be dealing with housing? Because this came through a staff policy, or a policy that was recommended to staff, by staff, to us, to Vancouver City Council, to make sure that we were at least meeting the needs of providing family housing.
So, thank you. I think that what, for how I see it, as I talked about, being a really big proponent of community in Vancouver, so talking about healthy neighborhoods, I recognize that there is a housing crisis, but I also feel that if we are only looking at housing as an issue and not looking at healthy neighborhoods as a whole, that in the future, that's going to be causing more issues, and then we're going to be back at council trying to deal with issues one at a time. So if we take a pause, it doesn't have to be very lengthy, because there's lots of applications that are happening, and as the previous speaker talked about, if we could put in processes that has quicker processing time, less individual appeals, the development process, so that, but it fits within the mold of the neighborhood plan, I feel that that's going to be addressed. Vancouver Foundation many years ago, and certain recent studies have shown that Vancouverites are disconnected and lonely. Part of that is how do we create that community? How do we create the infrastructure and the amenities so that it's not just a roof over our heads, but it's a place to live, and that continues to attract people to Vancouver for this, where they would like to call it a home?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. And that's it for questions. Okay, we've got Martina Lee, Ben Mortensen. Great, up to five minutes. Thanks very much.
Hello. My name's Ben Mortensen, and I'm speaking against the proposal. I've lived in Vancouver for over 20 years, including the last 16 years in the neighborhood, which we're talking about right now. I have three young children, and I started off as a renter, and now I'm a homeowner. For the record, and in full disclosure, I want to say I did not attend the Fraser Street walking tour that occurred last week, and I'm sorry, because I hear they stopped it at the end at Ernest Ice Cream, which would have been awesome. However, I am part of the Fraser Street Neighborhood Coalition, and we are a collection of concerned residents. We're not paid lobbyists, we don't have deep pockets, we, but we have come together over our concerns about the rampant and what we feel is reckless, reckless development of the Fraser Street corridor. So first, I want to just talk about our petition that we circulated last meeting. So, and we submitted that to council, and we have signatures from over 540 concerned residents in the Fraser Street area. We were able to obtain these signatures in less than one month by knocking on doors, attending community events, and through our listserv and other local listservs. So basically, I just wanted to tell you what the survey, or the petition says. It says, "The members of the Fraser Street Neighborhood Coalition and people who signed it," oh, I shouldn't say that, sorry. This is not what this says, but this is what I was going to say. Sorry. I was just going to say that we're not NIMBY. We are not trying to stop all development. In fact, I would say we are IMBY. We would like development, but we want development that is reasonable, and we want development that is respectful, and we want development that actually builds neighborhood and doesn't destroy it. So our petition reads, "The Fraser Street community wants development that respects the principles of community inclusion, affordability, and thoughtful comprehensive planning. Therefore, we the undersigned call upon city council to ensure that the Fraser Street community is properly consulted in all development decisions affecting our neighborhood. Ensure that development provides affordable housing and affordable premises for independent businesses. Ensure that sufficient community amenities be provided that meet the needs of residents, including green space, transit, childcare, schools, arts, and recreation. Ensure that development respects the historical, geographical, and aesthetic uniqueness of the Fraser Street community, and ensure that development takes place within a comprehensive plan for the Fraser Street community." And we don't think these demands are unreasonable, but we also do not think that the current proposed development actually meets any of those principles. So, you know, I really, first of all, I really don't understand, I know someone's tried to explain it, why the development is not required to pay the community amenities contribution levy. The policy report that was circulated actually, and I quote, reads, "The application does not meet the eligibility for CAC exemption." So the report actually says that. This is a for-profit company that bought the land, probably at inflated prices, but then is using this as an excuse to argue against their need to pay this levy. And so in other words, it's the Fraser Street residents who are being asked to subsidize Strand because of their business decisions. So the company's been lauded for the, paying the citywide developmental cost levy, but however, these funds, as you know, go into the general city coffers, and there's no guarantee that any money will come back to our community. Without, without ensuring the funds are encumbered, the Fraser Street community is being expected to accommodate a huge influx of people without any guaranteed increases in infrastructure, including childcare, community services, libraries, and schools. So I don't think this is a really great precedent. It basically is saying to all the developers, you do not have to worry about this levy. You, you might as well just take it off your books at this point, then, I would assume, because if you do this, you are basically telling all developers, you actually don't have to pay this one, we'll do this, the- We'll, the residents will suck it up and we will just deal with all these new people and maybe the city will give us some amenities and investments, but we don't know." Second, as Dawn noted, there are no affordable units. And I really think if the council wants to waive, you know, these things, if they want to allow a higher height, if they want to not have the community amenities levy, then at least I would hope they would make it so that there is some affordability built into these new developments moving forward. And finally, all these developments are going on without a current community-specific or citywide plan. And it feels to me like they're being rushed through in an ad hoc manner so they can avoid being approved before these plans are actually put in place. So Fraser Street is not, that's not like Canby or any other street. That's not Paris. And, yeah.
We're just at the five minutes.
Developments are going to feel like Star Wars and the trench scene, but without the cool tie fighters and X-wing fighters.
Thanks very much. You have councillor Weeb has a question for you.
A couple of questions. One, obviously you've looked quite a lot at the report, looked at the numbers. The 209,000 for public art, did your group talk about what that could look like, calculus of the history, what the neighborhood would be looking for, or is that not a discussion that was brought up?
It's not a discussion that was brought up. But I mean, if you're going to make it look like the trench scene from Star Wars, I would suggest making them like replicas of the plasma cannons to shoot down the tie fighters.
So not something that's showcasing the history of Alex Motors or something?
Well, I was being a little sarcastic there. But I just, you know, public art is nice and I appreciate it, but I'd rather see the community amenities levy, to be honest.
Okay. And, I mean, obviously we've seen other buildings waive the DCL component of 2.5 million to bring affordability. Was that something that you guys discussed as a neighborhood, saying maybe if they actually lowered their DCLs, we could get more affordability to the neighborhood or no?
We didn't discuss it specifically, but I think personally, and I would support that. I would have, I'd love to see more affordability. So I just think if you're going to trade off something, at least get some affordability out of whatever you're giving away.
Okay. And a quick question about the coalition. How many of them are renters? Do you have a breakdown of, is it a good mix of the, of the neighborhood?
I'd say most of them are owners, to be honest. I don't know, it's never been a topic of conversation.
Yep.
But I would say most of them are owners, to be honest.
Okay, thanks a lot for coming.
Thank you. Questions also from councillor Kirby Young.
Hi, hi, thanks so mu, thanks for being here. I have a couple of questions. I also did not attend the walking tour. I didn't actually receive an invitation, but I do love Ernest Ice Cream, so I'm with you on that one. You had mentioned it's not Paris and really focusing in on the Vancouver context, so I wanted to ask you a question because you'd referenced the petition and the more than 500 signatures and kind of the power of that. And I'm wondering and looking at it, if, how you would weigh council, if you were in our shoes, to weigh that? Because when I look at that petition, there is a significant percentage that is not from Vancouver and not from B.C. And they're from Portugal, Markham, Bella Culla, Merritt, Abbotsford, London, Ontario, Toronto, Burlington, Saskatoon, Gatineau, Quebec, Montreal, Portland, White Horse. A significant number that are not from Vancouver, let alone the neighborhood. So I'm wondering if you can speak to how you would suggest council weigh that petition?
Well, I'll be honest, I hadn't looked at the specific responses. I helped get, I actually went door-to-door getting signatures and I went around the development and every house that I knocked on signed our petition.
Okay.
So, all those people, I couldn't, there was no one I met in the immediate surrounding of that proposed development that was in favor of it. We did, the, the petition has been posted on a website and unfortunately then you do get people from around the world, I guess, logging into the website. So we don't, I guess we could have tried to exclude those people, but we were sort of doing this at the last minute and bringing it to council based on the assumption that more local people would have signed it than more external.
Yeah, it struck me, it's quite extraordinary and I'm looking at it here, so I was just asking and I appreciate you sharing your experience of kind of door-knocking for that because I have to weigh the information we've been provided and that's what we see. And to your comment around the citywide plan, it is upcoming, so I do hope you take the opportunity to participate in that. I think that hopefully we'll be able to get towards some solid plans for neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thanks very much for coming in. Kim McCarthy, number 18, followed by number 20, Danny Buntain. Buntain? Sorry, Kim McCarthy, please go ahead.
Hi, my name's Kim McCarthy. I'm a long-term resident of the Fraser Street neighborhood and I'm also a member of the Fraser Street Neighborhood Coalition. And I have, I did start out as a renter in the area and then co-bought a house with a friend, making a kind of a mini co-op and have since purchased that other part of the house for rental, eventual rental. And I am opposed to the current plans for this development. I will mention, there are renters on our group. We do have a small steering committee and at least one or two are renters, but I'm not sure what proportion of them are. Anyway, with all respect to everyone who's been speaking and all the different points of view, I would just like to say that I appreciate and understand the need for development along the Fraser Street corridor. Our neighborhood group is in favor of development. It is the height of this proposal that we are most opposed to. The proposed building far exceeds the height of any other buildings in the area and does not fit with the character of the neighborhood. Being on the crest of the hill at 23rd, the building six to seven stories will be that much more pronounced. I really think a four-story building that slopes down to the existing residential area would be much more fitting. I would like to see thoughtful, well-planned, community-minded development along Fraser Street. This would include consultation with residents and be sensitive to the current neighborhood character. The Fraser Street Neighborhood Coalition welcomes truly affordable rental housing in this plan. The Fraser Street neighborhood has been developing over the years as a walkable community with unique small cafes and businesses, as well as having a diverse multicultural population and many young families. I would like to see this natural evolution continue, which I think would happen with smaller-scale developments and the addition of townhomes, co-ops, and a green-friendly development plan. Oversized condo developments such as the Strand proposal will change this neighborhood's character, strain local services, increase traffic, and loom over residential blocks. I hope that the new citywide plan will take into account Vancouver's diverse communities and work together with residents to retain as much character and heritage value as possible in the future development projects. I am not opposed to development on Fraser. I just want to see well-planned development with respect and sensitivity to the current neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks very much. You have a question from councillor Dominado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. McCarthy, for coming in this evening. I just wanted to touch on the subject of sort of the character of the neighborhood and maybe in your words, what you just, what you see as the character of the neighborhood? Because I know for myself, I look at it in terms of there's building form which contributes to character, but also, it's also sort of people as well, the community itself, the events, activities. And how, how would you describe?
I see it as a very diverse and vibrant community. We have many different cultural groups. It's mixed ethnicity, mixed age, and having been there for over 30 years, I have enjoyed the development that's happened along our corridor. It's been, in my opinion, gotten better and better, but I feel like the type of evolution that's taken place would be nice to see it continued and in a little bit scaled-down versions, rather than putting up all of a sudden one very large building at the top of the hill. A lot of the character of the neighborhood has also come from the new businesses in the area and old businesses in the area for that matter. Multicultural, little grocers and et cetera, but also there's been cafe development, which is pretty small scale, like the little cafe, Marché Saint George, just off of Fraser. It's just beautiful and it's such a community gathering spot. Batard Bakery on Fraser has been very popular. It's again, a revitalized two-story building. Beehive Hair Salon again, and the little Polish deli and the Polish Hall holding events, they're all mostly two-story, but there have been some four-stories built in the area that I think work. And I think when they slope down especially, there's one at, I think it's 20th, that's been built four stories, business on the ground, and then it slopes down a hill and it ties very nicely into the neighborhood, rather than building up to continue a continuous high platform.
Do you see, you mentioned as well that largely, that you entered with the coalition, that the, mostly opposition is actually around the height. You sort of, that you sort of articulated that at the beginning.
Well, actually, I should have also mentioned in the affordability, the affordability is a very big issue as well. We would really like to see affordable, truly affordable housing.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I think we've been, we've acknowledged that, that a conversation on affordability, the challenge of how that's been defined and that for some, these might be affordable, as we heard from the gentleman with Hootsuite about their employees, that some of these rentals would be affordable to their staff. But I was going to ask you, just in the, in the context of this, is that this, this proposal does include some retail component at the bottom and is that something that in terms of the design that you like? Because you just talked about some of the local small businesses, I've been to the bakery. I'm just wondering, did you like the inclusion of that?
I think most of the neighborhood would, would welcome more commercial businesses. I think it kind of, you know, depends if it's big box or I'd really like to see the non-big box, more unique.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. I just have a question for you. So, I asked for kind of an income list of the type of people that can live in this building and I'm just wondering what, just to get your take on this. So, we talk about a lot of schools in the neighborhood and according to this kind of Metro Vancouver survey, a secondary or elementary school teacher makes about $60,000 a year and with that level of income, they could afford to live in a studio apartment in this, in this building. If they paid half their income, they could live in a one-bedroom. And so that would mean if you had two teachers living together, they could easily afford to live here. And I, and I think when we, I don't like the word affordability either because it tends to cloud, you know, our thinking. But if you think about, I was just struck by, you, you said the kind of people that are working in your neighborhood, the little stores and that kind of thing, but none of them can really afford to live in the neighborhood.
No, they can't, including the people that I know from our committee and the affiliated group. There are people here in, in our group that would not be able to afford most definitely to live in that building.
And, and what we're finding on the west side of the city is where prices are that much higher, you're, you're getting a virtual hollowing out of your communities where you can't find workers for restaurants and hair salons and that type of thing. And we get you on the affordability side, it's front and center of what we're doing. But I'm just wondering, you know, if, if we don't build rental here, which your teachers can live in and firefighters and police, where are we going to build it?
Well, it is being built all over Vancouver. There, the corridors along King Edward, Canby, 41st, Marine Drive, you just can't even go down a block without seeing it. It's all over Vancouver. And the other thing is, when I was recently looking down King Edward, there are a lot of condos going up there and I was counting and I did not see anything of this size. Most of them were actually four stories.
Condos, oh, you say?
Condo buildings. I'm, I don't know which, I don't know if any of them are rental because I'm really not in on, on that, but it did strike me, just the, the look of the place and how many are going in. It was, you know, there weren't any large buildings like this there and I feel like maybe those areas could accommodate it more.
Just that they can't, rental, there's less profit on it, so you have to build slightly bigger.
Right, well, the other, I, I would also just, I know it's maybe off-topic of this, but I think also the city, I'm, I'm really in favor of the citywide plan and I really think that it would be a great thing to be consulting with the neighbors and looking at the existing culture of the neighborhood. And, but I also kind of put it out there that I think the city should be purchasing more land so that things like co-ops could also be built in neighborhoods.
Right, but that's.
And managed by the city.
We're trying, but, you know, property taxes have their kind of upper limit and, and this is the conundrum we're in.
Just a thought.
Yeah. It's a conundrum we're in, is that we just can't get the, you know, that kind of subsidy. So market rental is kind of like, this is what we're proposing and when we have, you know, builders that are saying, "This is what we can put in your neighborhood and make it work." Otherwise, what will be there, as we've heard, is it's zoned for duplexes. So we'll get, we'll get new duplexes perhaps there instead of this, that you would require a salary of like $300,000 a year in order to buy.
Well, there's always mixed-use development as well and as Dawn had mentioned, maybe a six-story could go in down lower, not necessarily on the crest. Right there, if you go stand on the crest of that hill and look around, I just think to myself, "How would I feel if I was living directly downtown, downhill from it in even, in any of those directions really?" It's, it's going to be quite imposing.
Okay, thanks very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I have questions from councillor Weeb.
I'm wondering, thanks for coming in. I was part of the Mount Pleasant community planning and we talked about having a hillside view and putting the density on the top of the hill and coming down and understanding the topography, but it sounds like from your meetings, it's the opposite and you want...
Not really. I understand that too and I also think scaling down is, is a nice approach and I've seen cities that have done it well. But I also have seen, and I don't agree with putting like a tower at the bottom, that's not my idea, just at the very top, when it's the only place right now, it's setting a precedent, I suppose, but it is going to tower over all those residences. I feel that maybe lowering it, you could maybe stay the same or go a little higher as you go down. I'm not meaning a spike at the bottom by any means.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. And we're on to speaker number 20, Danny Buntain, Buntain? Danny Buntain? Susan Gill? Alan Metzela? Oh, sorry, we have Susan Gill? That's okay, I went a little fast. Sorry, are you Susan Gill? Okay, great. Thanks very much for coming in tonight and you have up to five minutes and you might have questions from councillors.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, okay, please go ahead.
My name is Susan Gill and I live on East 21st Avenue and I'm opposed to this development. I'm not, sorry, I'm nervous, but I'm not anti-development. It is inevitable in a growing city. I've lived in the neighborhood for 17 years, but I have concerns about this proposal and how it's going to fit into our community. The ACH policy clearly states that it allows for consideration of rezoning proposals, which will be evaluated on the criteria of the following categories: affordability, location, and form of development. And my issues touch on all of these criteria. So not to go on about the height, but it is, it is too high. It's too big, it's too high, and it's on a crest. The, the, this doesn't show the typography at all of the land and how it drops on either side. And it is kind of hard to imagine what 71.5 feet is, unless you're standing beside a building of that height, but standard light, city light is 25 feet. So if you stack three of those on top of each other, it really gives you a good idea of kind of the height of just that this building could be. So you could walk up Fraser Street and you could stand on that site and you could actually get an idea of the magnitude of this building and the contrast to what's around it. In that, it'll have a huge shadow effect, especially on the houses in all directions, but especially the ones to the west. And so the location is just completely incorrect. It is zoned RT2, which would be great, even a four-story would be great and at this stage, I'm even willing to go to six stories. But it's just not appropriate, given the location. And it doesn't suit the neighborhood and not only its size, but I, I do have an issue with demolishing the Alex's Automotive that's on the corner that's been there for 90 years and plus. It could be interesting coffee shop, it could be green space, it could be an art, it could be so many things, but I think that Vancouver needs to hold on to the little bit of heritage and character that's got and it could really be incorporated well into a newer development. And I think it's a shame to disregard that, which seems to be because of dollars. It was, it was noted, but that it would cost too much to include this in the project and I think that's, you know, a travesty really. I'm going to mention it again, but the no CAC contribution just doesn't seem right. We, we need community spaces and amenities, green space, daycare schools, walking areas. These are part of a healthy, sustainable, and livable community. This is, this is part of the world-class green city that Vancouver continually vies to be. It's blatantly disregarding this policy requirement that's been set by you. So, it's, I think they mentioned that there was going to be 800 square feet outside as the outdoor space and it's just not acceptable. as the outdoor space. And it's just not acceptable. It's not a way to live. So it's not affordable. That's a given. And I know affordable is a bit of a subjective term. It was mentioned about how much you would have to make to rent a one-bedroom, 2,000 square foot. And I think if you go by the one-third of your wage, I believe it is actually on take-home pay, not on gross pay. But if we're going to go by that, you actually have to make closer to $100,000 gross. It would net you $74,000, not grossing 74,000. So again, it's a lot of money. So I'm really keen for a plan for Fraser Street and a city plan. I want to be included. I want to be thought of as in the bigger picture. And even though we're talking specifically about this development, I don't think that you can omit taking into consideration all of the developments that are going on in the area. It should be easier if there's a city plan, right? To, to plan things and not have ad hoc, not go through this process at every ad hoc proposal, because neighbors and city and everyone is sort of on the same page. And you get input. To me, it just seems-
We're just at the five minutes.
Okay.
Thanks very much. You have a question from-
So can I just, my last, I just want to say that the development paid too much money for the land, and that's the driving force behind their proposal.
We're at the five minutes, but you do have a question from councillor Hardwick. So perhaps she can follow along that track. Thanks very much, councillor Hardwick. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to go back, what I, you broke your argument down into affordability, location, and form of development. And you felt that, that under form of development, the height was the large, height enassing was the largest issue. And you talked about the exterior space, and so that's not a way to live. But I think we heard earlier that that's the way people live in Paris. So people obviously can live with that kind of height. Location, the ridge, I think we heard that the model here is not to scale, and we don't really have a sense of, of the implication of the, of the height or the ridge from a location standpoint. And on the affordability side, your argument was that it's not affordable. Is that a proper characterization?
I think it's been cut a bit short, but sure.
Those were the key points. And you just observed that, I think, what we talked about earlier with an earlier speaker was the pro forma and making the numbers work for the development. And that seems to, it may be that they paid too much money, I don't know. I haven't seen the pro forma, but certainly the planning department has. So what I'm, then you would be open to development and density and rental at that location if it were not as high? Is, am I oversimplifying?
I would. No, I think that's accurate. I think a big, I think rental is needed. I think the rents are unfortunate, and the size of the units are unfortunate. But I would be, yes, open to something that was not at such a large scale and to such a height.
And you're keen for a citywide plan, which is encouraging. But is your expectation that that plan would be at a neighborhood level rather than citywide? Are you expecting-
I think the two do work together. Neighborhoods make up a city, and I would hope and think that city would, neighborhoods would be consulted in some regard in coming up with a citywide plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. That's it for questions. Thanks for coming in tonight. We have Alan Metzella now. Thanks for coming in, and up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
I'm here, I've been a resident. I'm two houses down from the proposal. And I am not in agreement with this proposal. I have three boys that I'm raising in the area. We use the laneway, we use the walk-to-school down a laneway. The laneway, this particular laneway is very steep. So you have to really gun it to get up that hill. And cars are often speeding up there as it is right now. And if we're going to add that much more traffic, I know they did a traffic report, so we can maybe look at that again. But I'm kind of worried about the safety of the children in the neighborhood right now. But I also wanted to make a comment on Dawn Davies' speech yesterday. I thought it was right, everything I wanted to say. So I just want to say thanks to Dawn for bringing up all those points very, very nicely. The other point that I wanted to bring up was, oh, wow, it's hard when you get up here to talk, eh? But I wanted to bring the scale of the model of this, is this model to scale 100%? And if it isn't, why is it here? Because it's, I can't speak unless I, you know, got facts and I, you know, want to make sure that they're the right things. But if this is not to scale, which I don't think it is, then it shouldn't be in the middle of the room, because that's what I've been looking at for two days. And it doesn't make any sense to me. It's kind of like false advertising. And it's kind of not, doesn't seem right to me at all. And my house is the second one from the one. And the bottom laneway of the bottom house at the bottom, two of those stacked up is as big as that building? That's kind of, if you stack them on top of each other, I don't know if that's going to really work. There only, that would be four stories. But it looks like, according to that plan, it would be seven in the back there. So you can understand what I'm trying to say there. I think that's all I really want to say right now. I'm not, I'm not against development. I want to see it. I want Fraser Street. I've been in the area for 52 years. I'm 52 years old. I've gone to Livingston, I've gone to Tupper. I'm proud, so proud of that neighborhood. And I always say, East Van, everyone's coming there now. But when I was a kid, it was east against west. It was a very tough upbringing. But we always won the war, so that's okay. But also the trees in the laneway, that's really nice. I really applaud that green trees. But isn't that where the sewer's running? Isn't there a big sewer problem there right now that we have? I think Mrs. Werner would definitely attest to that, because I am constantly on her, you know, for other reasons, but that's okay. But she mentioned to me that, yeah, there's a big problem, and the city's always there working on the sewers, working on the sewers. So adding trees in the laneway, that's, that's a really good idea. I don't think it's going to work that good, and we're going to be in big trouble when it comes down to it. I still got two minutes left, that's okay. What else I want to say? That's pretty much enough. No, I think that it's very important to mention that we want development. And when I walk up and down Fraser Street, it's kind of quiet. I don't necessarily like that. I like a little action in my life. I like to have fun, first and foremost, and be safe in my neighborhood. Especially my kids are coming home at 11:30 at night. I do think safety is important. Not that often, I may add. But yeah, I want development, but this is, I have a rooftop deck, I forgot to mention that. And I'm pretty much the highest house on the hill. So when I go up there and I turn around, I'm going to see this big wall. Wow. It's really going to change things. I bought the house for the, because of that deck, too. And when I turn around and I look at where I was raised, there's my high school, there's my elementary school, there's where everything happened. And I can tell stories all day long from up there with a beer in my hand. Forty seconds left, to make sure you know that. Thank you very much for letting me speak here today. East Van all the way. And I hope that they change what they're doing just a little bit more. And I hope that they have, should have answers for everything that you asked for. When they have to go to the applicant, right now, I like to go to the applicant myself and ask them to stop the parties that are happening there and the rundown houses that are starting to happen along that corridor. I think they should have to be cleaned up, because it's a disgrace to have a party at 4 o'clock in the morning almost every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday night. And the police, I phoned many times, and they said, you got to use the non-emergency number, because they're backed up. And I'm not going over there, because, even though I'd like to, but I, I'm not going to do that, because I think it would be not ill-advised. So-
Thanks very much. We're at the five minutes.
Thank you very much.
You do have a couple of questions here?
Oh, no.
Councillor Bly? Go ahead, councillor Bly, over here.
Hi there. Thanks for coming back tonight. And for making us all laugh, because sometimes it gets a little heavy in here. So I appreciate your comments around the model, and I think, you know, we're not able to ask the applicant at this exact moment, but we could do that later, just to verify the scale. And I know this area really well, as well, I have East Van. You sound a bit like my son. He sort of cheers on East Van all the time. But, and he's right, it's a fabulous place to live. But one thing I would say is that it is so hard to imagine your house in the palm of your hand and then try and compare the gradient of that street on the model and think that it's accurate. So I'm really looking at it and taking your feedback. I would just want you to know. And I just think we all need to expand our imagination to really, what would it be like to put your house in your hand, and then relate that to the gradient on that hill. People that make these models are not the developer, it's not the developer, the applicant, right? It's just a contracted company that does that. So I think it's just, before we cast doubt on the model completely, I will ask that question at the end of the applicant. But I think it's just really important that we are looking at what we're looking at and saying, it is really tough to imagine that that could be the case.
I just noticed-
Please, yeah.
On the model.
Yeah.
I think that's 23rd.
Yeah.
It looks like that street's flat. It's completely flat. 23rd is flat right there. I just noticed that. 22nd's on a slight angle, 23rd's flat. Well, that's not true whatsoever. So why is it allowed to be in this room? Why do we have to keep looking at it to say, oh, that's where it's going to be? It's not that big of a house. If it's not to scale, why is it in here? Because it's not.
Okay, well, we're going to talk to the applicant, okay. But we're not saying it's not. We just say, we don't know for sure, so fine. We will ask that question.
I'm a carpenter, and I have two journeyman tickets in-
Fair enough.
And I, in the trades, and I, by eye, I'm saying-
I've biked up that hill, I know. It's a, it's a heck of a hill. Okay. So one question that I wanted to say, ask you, as you said, if I could change, you know, I really hope that they'll take this feedback and change. So what is your, what would you like to see different on this particular application? On this particular-
On this particular application, I'd like to see it four stories, not so high, because it's such a dominating structure when you're walking up the street. It's just like, wow.
So height?
Yes, the height is very, very important to me. I know that even when I say goodbye to someone at my house, standing on my front porch and to the front sidewalk, I feel like a king, because it's like three levels down. And you say goodbye, and it's like, yeah, look at me. I feel sometimes like just go in the house. And now I'm going to be saying hi to these guys. It's just, it's so monstrosity compared to what's there.
Okay. Got it. So height. Is there anything else?
Height, yep. And I don't mind four stories. I'm not opposed to that. I like the retail. And in Arizona, when I go golfing to Greyhawk, I go down the highway, just like Paris. But it's only the same level all everywhere I go. So I don't know why we can't just keep that same level.
Okay, okay.
Like Paris, I guess.
Okay, I appreciate, we'll see. Yeah, okay.
Lots of cities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
Yeah, you do. You got one from councillor Kirby Young.
Over here. Mr. Metzella, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Thanks for being here. He seemed like a straight shooter, so I just want to be clear. So density, okay? Rent, commercial, okay? Height, not okay, in this particular project? Is that a good summary?
Yes, yep.
Okay. And just in terms of giving us some context in the neighborhood, because you mentioned that you're higher than the others, and so you can see the district. So can you see your neighbors then, relative to the site? Are you looking down on them, similar to how you're envisioning that this building would look on you?
If I go on a rooftop deck, sometimes I don't want to even go up there, because it feels like that's what you're doing. So I sometimes actually just go back down. You know, especially if it's at night, you know, you just, sometimes you can, you know.
Okay. But, but you do have differences in the scale, it sounds like, within the context of the site. She said you're very close, right?
Goes up the hill perfectly, four-foot intervals or whatever it is, when you're standing there looking down.
Okay. But your neighbors could say that-
I don't think you can really-
You're looking down on them, right?
I don't see down on a lot of people. I mean, I look down to the alley, I can see in your yard, I can, you know, I look down to the front side, I see you get out of your car.
Okay.
It's not like, yeah, I don't have a clear view of bedrooms or anything like that.
Okay. And then one other follow-up. You also mentioned that, in terms of what's going on with the site currently, that there's some real issues with what's currently there in terms of the neighborhood. And I appreciate you bringing that up. So what's there, you're saying what's there right now is not working?
It is an absolute mess if you drive down the alley. Garbages are overflowing. I noticed they just, after the next morning-
I noticed it's pretty old, some of those buildings, right?
Oh, yeah, they're pretty old, and they're, but they were well-kept. And right now, there's, I think, I think there's 11 kids that rent out one of the houses. I think it was $7,000, if I'm not mistaken. And it's a party, they rotate from house to house to house. And Lynn, poor Lynn, they use volleyball right outside of her window, and they're playing at 11 o'clock, just crank music. And they can't do anything, and they-
So not, not having a positive impact on the neighborhood, it sounds like.
No, it's not. And so if the applicant is really concerned, I think if we're being treated like that now, how are we going to be treated when it's being built and once they got the approval from you guys? Who cares about them? We're getting our money. And I don't know anything about CACs or anything like that, so.
Okay. But thank you also, thank you for sharing that and being here, and thanks for not tying up the nine-one-one emergency line.
Also one of the longest-serving families in Tupper.
Good, good to know.
Right from the get-go.
Good to know. Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Thanks for coming in.
Woo!
Okay. Okay, Alex Burgers. You have up to five minutes. Please go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, councillors. I'm here to speak on, in proposal of the project. I'm a resident in the neighborhood. Been a resident, I own my own house. I've been here for 13 years. My family frequents the Fraser area on a number, on a number of occasions, often on a day. My concerns are, in general, I'm very concerned about the applicant meeting all the requirements of the zoning and the development planning, and then getting rejected. I think that the council has already rejected a number of controversial proposals in other areas of the city. And I think that the council carries a lot of weight in that regard. So I think that council has to be careful about, and I hate to put it in strong terms like this, but I think the council has to be careful about scaring away development, because that is a very real possibility. I'd also like to point out that I think that one overall perspective is that density and development is an inevitable outcome of a city that is growing. And yes, I agree that we do have to take appropriate measures to account for that. But it's not something that we can avoid. If that means that we build seven-story buildings, and that means that we have to accommodate for a number of units in the building, I'm not sure how we can necessarily get around that. I think that we can always say, yeah, you know what, it can't be more than four stories. I think then there are some realities that we have to accommodate with regards to density. In specific to the proposal, it's a main transportation corridor and, which allows for a lot of transportation options. There's a reliance, it seems to me that a lot of opponents are relying on anecdotal evidence or anecdotal survey info. And I think anecdotal survey info is, can be very dangerous to rely on, because if that's what we're relying on, we might as well throw science out the window. I think that also, too, is that I'm not, councillor Hardwick has mentioned that she's not privy to the pro forma, neither am I. But I can tell you, having worked for 20 years in construction with a number of development companies, that it's extremely difficult to build a quality rental below a certain cost. And I think that to say, okay, well, you know, you have to build affordable, quote-unquote, affordable rental, yes, in theory, that works. But in, in practice, the number- affordable rental, yes, in theory, that works, but in practice, the numbers don't work. I also think that, it's been brought up a number of times, that Fraser Street doesn't have a plan, and as a result, this project is being spot-zoned. I'm missing something here, because I don't think that that's the applicant's issue. That's council's issue. That's planning's issue. That's not the applicant's issue. The applicant is saying, we bought, and we assembled a property, and we are putting forward a proposal to build on it. The fact that there is no Fraser plan, I'm not sure I make the connection as to whether that's the applicant's problem. I don't really understand how that works. And maybe council, or maybe planning can help me clear that up.
And you just have 10 seconds, but you do have a question.
And the other issue of gentrification, I've lived in the neighborhood for 13 years, I can say that my neighborhood has benefited greatly from gentrification.
Perhaps I can stop you there, because you do have a question from Councilor Domenado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Burgers, for coming in this evening. So, just kind of wanting to follow up on your comments, what I'm hearing is you live in the neighborhood and you're supportive of this proposal.
Yes.
Correct, okay.
Yes.
Do you, some of the feedback we've heard though this evening is that it isn't necessarily a fit, there's been concerns about the form, the density, and also sort of that lack of planning piece. Do you have any suggestions on how we go forward and how we do that planning involving the community? And there is a vision that sets out sort of expectations around, that was developed by the community at one stage, but do you have any suggestions for us going forward?
In terms of how the project can fit into the neighborhood?
Engaging residents, like yourself.
I like, okay, so I like the commercial element of it. I really don't have much, like, I think the architecture is just fine. I hear a lot of discussion about how the height is an issue and how the model is not to scale. I think, you know, having, you know, having used models in the past, I don't know if that's a valid claim, I think it's an optics issue. So I think that the, I think if the height is a substantial issue, there could possibly be some accommodations made, but I'd be careful about that, because one of the things is that the applicant will turn around and will say, okay, so height is an issue on Fraser, but it's not on Kingsway? So Kingsway, we can put six stories on, which they've done, but Fraser, for some reason, is different. And Kingsway being, you know, Kingsway has its own issues, and City Vancouver should, you know, definitely take some, take some time to look at that, but, you know, Fraser is a major transportation corridor. If you go, if you go south on Fraser into, let's say, the 41st area, okay? The amount of activity in that area is, it's a completely different neighborhood, it's a completely different feel. And that's because there is all commercial for 10 blocks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thanks, another question, Councilor Hardwick.
Hi there, over here. So you are a neighbor, but you work in the property development industry?
Yes.
Thank you. So, I think you will agree that there's no one-size-fits-all model.
There's no one-size-to-
One-size-fits-all?
No.
Right.
I agree with that.
So, you know, you were making the comparison between Fraser and Kingsway, and they're, you know, I often refer to the nuance of neighborhoods, because all of our communities, you know, are different, because they all develop differently over time. And I think you'll agree that the city has always been growing, this is, I mean, the demographics, the population growth shows us that if there's one thing that's been constant, it has been change in the city. So knowing all of that, and being as familiar as you are with the pro forma question, and I agree with you, I think this is the problem, is that they're trying to make the numbers work at this location. But when we think about the spot zoning, it has had its inherent problems. And I think this has been, maybe you can comment on this professionally, I was just going back through and looking at the rules governing this particular interim rezoning policy, and one of the conditions, and this is something that comes up fairly frequently, is the notion of community support. So we can't just act arbitrarily, we do want to be sensitive to the neighborhood. So how would you balance the need for density, the need for rental accommodation, knowing the neighborhood since you live there, and having your professional expertise, how would you build community support around something like this?
So, again, I don't, you know, I don't want to belay to the point, but to compare, you know, Kingsway to Fraser, but I live about maybe a block and a half away from Kingsway. And in the past, there was a six-story that was completed just near the corner of Kingsway and Windsor. And that's a rental building, full rental building. I am not aware if it's maybe, if it's market rental, or if it's subsidized rental, or, but it's a six-story, it's a six-story building with a commercial at grade. And they're, at the other end of the block, they're building market housing. And right at the corner of Kingsway and Windsor, they're building market housing. So it's, so what I'm saying is that on commercial strips in main transportation corridors, the times are changing.
That's not answering my question about how to, I'm not trying to be funny about this, it says, right specifically in the conditions, "A demonstration of a degree of community support for sites that," and, you know, this is one of the conditions, "in addition to affordability and enhanced level of affordability," which has been one of the bones of contention, "subject to urban design performance," and we've talked about, we've heard a lot about height here. So trying to reconcile the policy with how to demonstrate a degree of community support, my question to you is, how do we reconcile it? Do you have any advice, again, based on being a neighbor and having expertise professionally?
So my, okay, so again, it goes back to, it goes back to looking at the pro forma, right? It's 121 units, commercial at grade provided, there is so much, so much space needs to be provided for parking. So the question would be, if I've got X number of space of land, and to what extent this is the council's problem, or to what extent this is the applicant's problem?
I'm going to have to stop you there, because we're at the five minutes, but Councilor Kirby Young also has questions for you, thanks very much.
Hi there.
Hi.
Thanks for being here, I just had one question, and you said that your neighborhood had benefited from gentrification, what did you mean by that? Can you?
Well, so, when I moved into the neighborhood 13 years ago, there is a number of, you know, I'm sure people, like, when I speak to my neighbors that have lived in the neighborhood for 20-plus years, they talk about the changes to the neighborhood, right? You know, they talk about the level of prostitution, they talk about the level of drug use, they talk about level of burglaries, they talk about the number, they talk about all that, right? So that has changed for the better, a lot. And I don't say that that's a result of gentrification, but the area has become quite a bit more favorable for families. And the gentrification has made it, in terms of coffee shops, in terms of restaurants, in terms of, in terms of shopping opportunities, it's all made it more walkable, the walkability score of the neighborhood is quite high. So what I would say is that the gentrification has made the neighborhood, had a positive effect.
Great, thank you, I appreciate the perspective.
Thanks very much, and that's it for questions, thank you for coming in today.
Thank you.
We have 24 is Kristi Matzella, followed by 25, Norma Hawkinson, and then 26, Sean Great, thanks for coming in, up to five minutes.
Thank you. I'm the other half of Al, who was up here earlier, mine will be a bit more formal than his, for sure. So my name is Kristi Matzella, I'm a resident and owner at 65022nd Avenue East, specifically I'm the second house behind the proposed development, and given my location, the second most impacted individual of this proposed development. I want to start by saying that I am not opposed to densification, I'm not opposed to rentals including low-income, working wage, and market set, I am not a NIMBY, and I'm not opposed to development in Vancouver. What I am opposed to, however, is the fact that there is no overall plan for the Fraser corridor, including development projects, schools, childcare, and resources. I am also opposed to the height of this building, laneway access, and the letters of support for this project. The height, the proposed structure is a seven-story building directly in front of single-family homes on a steep hill. The building is on the crest of a hill and is the highest point when approaching from all directions. The building is much larger than what is on Main Street or other similar streets that have mixed residential and retail. This building is a monstrosity compared to other buildings that have been developed in the Fraser corridor, and one that is going to impede the whole neighborhood behind. As brought up by councilors the other night, from the front it may be seven stories, but by the time you reach the back of the building and proceed down the lane, the height becomes exponentially taller compared to the residences behind. The truth of the matter is that the whole of the neighborhood will lose the view of the skyline, because by the time you get to the bottom of the alley on Carolina Street, this building looks like a skyscraper. The disappointing part to me of this equation is that the city should have, from the get-go, worked with the developer about this height en masse issue. It is clearly indicated in the public meetings, in feedback from the public, in presentations thus far, and even in opening comments from you, the councilors, that the height was a concern, given the topography of the land. Laneway, with all the efforts that the City of Vancouver has put into the revitalization of laneways, I'm surprised access for both residents, guests, and commercial vehicles is being considered via the lane. With the advent of lane houses, the promotion of laneways as meeting spaces and vibrant parts of our neighborhood, and in fact, there are townhomes even located in the back of this development, it is disappointing to see the proposal with entry from the back lane. In the 10 years that we have lived in our home, we have met all of our neighbors in the lane. My husband met one of his best friends in the lane, we have daily conversations with those walking their dogs, working on their cars, or just enjoying the geography. My children learned to ride their bikes, parallel park, and shoot hoops in the lane. We also mourned the loss of one of our neighbors with her family in the lane. Thus, I am concerned about the amount of vehicles that will be in the lane. The lead-up to the proposed development from Carolina Street, which is the lowest street on this model, is steep, and vehicles speed to get up the hill. We can't use the lane in the winter months, because the grade is so steep and is too dangerous. To confirm, check with your garbage contractor, who can confirm the number of days last year they were unable to access our homes because of the weather and the grade of the land. Meeting the neighbors, both old and new, will not be promoted by having a lane that is a traffic artery. Schools, there is no room at the local elementary school, David Livingston, which is at 101% capacity. In addition, and contrary to what an earlier speaker indicated, Tupper Secondary is almost at capacity, as confirmed this week by the school staff. I have children at both schools, and what I know is that no parent wants to move into a neighborhood expecting their child to be accepted at the local school, only to find there's no room. Shifting school boundaries is not the solution, it means getting in a car or taking a bus with your child to get them to school. It is also my understanding that the next closest schools are full. Lastly, letters of support, I would like to address the transparency with respect to the letters of support that have been uploaded to the city site. I would encourage council members to take the time to Google the supporters. It is an easy search, considering the majority are businesses and networking contacts of what I assume is the developer. I was especially surprised to see not one, not two, but six real estate agents from Colliers International providing support, all with the same email template, though slightly adjusted. All were sent on the same day within one hour. Otherwise, there were lawyers, property developers, construction companies, and even the Masonry Stone Company giving their unconditional support. Individuals did not provide information as to their employers, but a search on Google would be Bosa Properties, MDX Development, Cushman &amp; Wakefield, McDonnell Realty, Rennie Realty, Hunter McLeod, Scott Construction, National Investment Team, and even Alex Automotive.
We just got 10 seconds left.
Okay. In closing, it is incumbent upon you, the city, to ensure that we accept citizens both old and new, it is incumbent that you, that you, sorry, there's enough resources and infrastructure, I take you, I encourage you to step back, come to our neighborhood, and have a walk-around. I'll be waiting in the back lane with my newly-proposed childcare business sign.
Thanks very much. Thank you, and no questions. That's good, thanks very much. So we have Norma Hawkinson.
Norma.
Norma Hawkinson, there we go. We have a presentation here.
My name is Norma Hawkinson, I live in the 700 block, East 24th Avenue, I live approximately a block and a half away from this proposal, and I am here to speak in opposition to it. My, I will be, the rooftop deck of this property will be visible from my property, in other words, they will, my property will also be visible from their vantage point. The pictures you're going to see here are pictures that I have finally, after 25 years of living in this neighborhood, decided to take matters to provide evidence to city of the parking situation, primarily that is created in our neighborhood, because on our block, on my side of the street, there is absolutely no alley whatsoever. So I am here to primarily give you a view of what it is like to live behind a commercial slash residential building that is already on Fraser. We have, everybody, of course, is only going to be five minutes, but this is my, the situation that occurs, where we have cars parked across driveways, there are only a few driveways there, everybody's only five minutes, just got to grab a coffee, oh, I'll just be getting my ice cream, no problem. The alley that you can see, and I really don't know how to advance this all, but the alley that you can see here is behind Fraser, along the 38, no, 3900 block of Fraser. More often than not, the neighborhood is disrupted by horn honking, because trucks will double-park in this alley to deliver groceries and supplies to the bakery, the restaurant, and to, so we have trucks such as Cisco Systems, Cisco Systems, sorry, Cisco, and they oftentimes will park sometimes, completely blocking the street, because they send- completely blocking the street because they send semi-trailers loaded with product, and they sometimes cannot get into the alley, and so they park across there. Another thing that often happens is that FedEx vehicles arrive and have knocked over my garbage cans on, by hitting them, because they're only going to be two minutes while they run across the street and deliver packages. We have vehicles that park on our street from Twenty-Fifth, and if you believe that the tenants of this building will not use the parking on Twenty-third and Twenty-second, you're wrong, they will. We have, the building that is at the corner here has about six suites in it, I believe, and a good portion of the tenants that live in that building have more than two or three vehicles, sometimes do mechanical work in the background here, and leave mechanical parts that they have offloaded along the side of the Seven-Eleven store there. When these businesses close at ten-thirty, eleven o'clock at night, there's sometimes a scramble for my neighbors to bring their cars back so that they can take their children to school in the morning. When these businesses close at night, the prostitution, drug dealing, and injectable drugs, drug blue sniffing, et cetera, then takes over in that alley. The prostitution comes up from Kingsway, and this is one of the first alleys where businesses are now closed. It's dark, and people can move without impunity along that. Trucks back up, this house across here has had their fence damaged so many times, they put up a wire fence just so that there was a bounce-back effect of trucks that would not damage their wooden fence. That building is now going to be torn down, and a duplex that is going to house an extended family is going to increase the number of adult children who live in our, on my block, from eleven to thirteen, and it will increase the number of children under the age of sixteen from eleven. More often than not, I mean, this picture I took...
And you just have ten seconds left. I know it goes really fast, though.
Our neighborhood has not benefited from gentrification. We have situations where, I had a gentleman refusing to allow his child to sit in his Mercedes, so he had her sit on my front steps to eat her ice cream, and then took it away from her because she was being poorly behaved, and...
And thanks for just on the five minutes. Really appreciate you coming in this evening. And there's no questions, so you're...
Questions, anyone? There are more pictures if you wish to scroll through them.
Sure, and the clerk has those, so we can include them in our package that we review. Thank you very much. We have Sean Keenan, number twenty-six, Gordon Buntain, number twenty-seven, Rob McKay Dunn, number twenty-eight, and Tamara Taggart, number twenty-nine. Great, thanks for coming in. And you're Sean?
Yes.
Thanks very much, and you start your timer. Five minutes, go right ahead.
Perfect. Hello, council, hello, mayor. My name is Sean Keenan. My wife and I are local residents within the Fraser Street community. My wife and I are both thirty-one years old and have lived in Vancouver all our lives. We're hard-working professionals and love East Vancouver. I support this project. We've lived in the neighborhood for seven years and rented for six of those. Recently, we were fortunate enough to buy our first home after working very hard to reach that milestone. I'm sure several members of the opposition were in the exact same position as us twenty to thirty years ago, except homeownership was much more affordable then. I'm disheartened to hear that through this public process, some homeowners in our community wish to now lock out other people from renting here by restricting projects like the one in question. It's become abundantly clear that many of the reasons for their opposition stem from a non-inclusive nature and seem to have complete disregard for the betterment of the area. Thirty years ago, renting and then moving into homeownership was way more attainable. Today, it's sad, but younger people need to be prepared to rent for an extended period of time, perhaps for the rest of their lives. I believe that the term "affordable" has not been used fairly in the context of this project. Why is market rental housing now a bad thing for Vancouver? There are three times as many houses for sale on Fraser Street than there are condos. Looking today, there is an eight-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot two-bedroom condo listed on Fraser Street for eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. To buy this two-bedroom condo, you'll need to save a hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars cash, which can take most people well over ten years. And even with that down payment, your monthly mortgage would be about thirty-four-hundred dollars, plus four-hundred dollars a month in strata fees, and approximately two-hundred dollars a month in taxes. So let's call it four-thousand dollars a month to live in eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet in this neighborhood. Conversely, a young couple could rent an equal-two-bedroom apartment and instead save fourteen-hundred dollars a month, or sixteen-thousand-eight-hundred dollars a year. This is how you save to own a home. You need to compare renting to homeownership, not only by comparing market rental to below-market rental. I can tell you firsthand, based on my friends and similar colleagues in the industry, there are many young people and young professionals who would love to live in a clean, modern place in this neighborhood, as opposed to the old, dilapidated stock that's here. Lastly, I just wanted to say quickly that a building of this size on an arterial road such as Fraser not only makes sense from an urban planning standpoint, but will also complement the Fraserhood's aesthetic, bring more people to flourish in the businesses that are there, and obviously encourage more businesses to open in the area. I encourage people here to just not let the pursuit of perfection ruin what is a fantastic project in a time where rental stock is a necessity. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks very much, and I don't see anybody here for questions, so that's fine. Thanks very much for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
We have Gordon Buntain as well. Let's see, Gordon, was that Gordon there? Mr. Buntain? Great, thanks. Up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
I won't need that long, thanks. I'm Gord Buntain. I've been asked by my daughter Dani to speak tonight, as she's unavailable. It was available on Tuesday. I was here on Tuesday, and first I didn't think I could bring much value. However, upon reflection, maybe my thoughts will. I live and work in Vancouver, and our business is located here and has been here for the last fifty-plus years with offices on East Side, West Side Vancouver, and we're very proud to be opening on Main Street soon. Our business is mostly made up of millennials, somewhere between twenty-five and forty, and all of them involved in the communities, whether it's fundraising charities and such. And I speak because I've now become involved in the Fraser community because both, all three of my kids now live here on Fraser between Twenty-sixth and Twenty-ninth. So I do understand, and I do hear, and I'm compassionate with each one of the people that are speaking. But some of the things that concern me, and I go, in my past, special interest groups can influence our local associations, and sometimes stopping development under the guise of education, daycare, planning, or just to change a way of life, it is wrong. Development can, if done properly, can bring opportunities, and each one of these concerns, I think, can be satisfied, and that's what council can do. This is, because we started in the East Side and West Side, we've been in the Dunbar community and Point Gray and Carersdale, and I studied there at UBC, and one of the things that was sort of interesting, in the early seventies, I took an urban land course and did a study on Dunbar and Point Gray, and they were looking at the corridor in Dunbar, and this was in the early, late, mid-sixties and seventies. And for whatever reason, nothing ever got developed. And so what we have right now is, we basically have a wasteland out in Dunbar, Point Gray. I know there's lots of issues, but one of them, there is no housing that's been developed thirty, forty years ago, or twenty or thirty years ago. So people that have sold their houses really don't have anywhere to go. Young adults don't have a place to live. They can live in basement suites. So maybe to the benefit of Fraser, they're all moving over to Fraser Street. But what, this concerns me, and I don't want to see Fraser become like Point Gray. And I think that if everyone can take a step back and drive out to our community and have a look, it's a wasteland. There's nobody there. You can walk across West Tenth, and the only concern is getting hit by a bus, and that's about it. And that's a bus to UBC. And you're going to need some development. It's going to bring life back to this community. It's going, not life, it'll create life, and it'll create its own life. A lot of these issues, which we're all talking about, will get resolved. The homes along the Fraser corridor, for whatever reason, maybe it's speculation, they appear to be quite rundown right now, and that block there, they're mostly older. And so this, a newer project's going to bring something special, I believe, for both my kids, my staff, and the community. And actually, I think maybe a few more projects like this might bring even a ton more value. The merchants are going to benefit, the restaurants, the services. And so I just hope that each one of you will just take a look around, and don't let what's gone on in our other communities like Dunbar, Point Gray, and Carersdale let that happen here because of a few special interests changing policy. And I hope that I haven't spoken out of turn, just out of passion.
Thanks very much. You do have a number of questions, sir. Councilor DeGenova, please go ahead.
Thanks so much. I was taken by your mention that, in your opinion, not a lot of this type of housing, and I assume you mean multifamily residential, was built in Dunbar twenty, twenty-five years ago.
Thirty-five years.
Thirty-five years ago, so...
And all these reports are available, and I don't know why some, what happened was...
That was not my question, sorry, sorry. I wanted, I wanted to ask you specifically, considering my comments before and my, what I understand from staff and my own experience, that housing becomes affordable. Sort of, it's not the newest housing that's affordable right at the beginning of its life. Even nonprofit housing, it's the same way. It becomes more affordable as it ages, and then you hit that spot where it's great because the maintenance costs aren't too high, but the rents are lower than the newer buildings. So you're talking about that in Dunbar, but if we don't build this here now, what is it going to be like in thirty-five years in Fraser?
What I'm talking about, if ten to twenty years from now, young people are still going to need a place to live, people that are retiring are going to need a place to live. So just kind of have an open mind here. And I know it's tough, and I do understand there's people, and it changes, but somehow it would be nice if we could figure this out so it works. I'm sorry, I'm from a different perspective than everybody else, but I hope it brings something.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilor Hardwick.
Hi, over here. What you said that piqued my interest was you said, and I made quotes around this, "if done properly." Do you remember that comment? I think that's really what's key here. What I've been hearing across the board is everybody knows that change is inevitable, and we need to have, we need to have more density, we need to have rental housing. We like that it's on an arterial, but we think that there's, I'm paraphrasing what I'm hearing from the folks in the area that are opposed to this, that they think it's got problems with height en masse, and, but they don't, I don't think want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. But that seemed to me consistent with what you said when you said "if done properly." So could you elaborate on that?
All of what you said, but be careful on your path because the rental income, or the rental rates probably going to somehow be tied into how the development goes. So I asked all my staff what they were paying for rent, which I thought was interesting. And so one is in a studio on Broadway and Main. She's got four-hundred square feet, and it's an old, old building, and she's paying eleven-fifty. She said the building's falling apart. Another one is on, in Burnaby, out by BCIT, and is in a one-bedroom, and they were paying fourteen-hundred for an old building. So we're going to have to somehow be mindful, and this is your balance, is that you need a number of units, that one that can justify a certain rent between the developer and the city that makes it all make sense. There's no point in putting one-bedroom in there that are two or twenty-five-hundred dollars. So if you increase the density and it just increases the rent, we haven't accomplished anything. So somehow you have to dig up and figure out how to make that all work so that the developers, we need a modest type of rental accommodation for all the young people because they can't afford the, they don't need the thirty-six-inch fridge, when a thirty-inch fridge just works just fine, if I can use that as an example, or if you know what I mean. If this development accomplishes that, then maybe it's the right way to go.
If done properly.
If done properly.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Dominado.
Thank you, Mr. Buntain, for coming in this evening. I was also curious just about, when you talked about Dunbar and Point Gray and the lack of sort of development over the years, and the implications for homeowners who may be empty nesters, kids are growing up, and now need something different, but can't necessarily stay in the neighborhood. Is that something that you think is a concern, not just obviously in that neighborhood, but neighborhoods like this? I know my father, he lives with us, and he lives in our secondary suite, but I'm curious about that perspective of...
And I understand there's lots of other issues with Dunbar, and I have lived there since eighty-nine. I lived in Kits in university days, in the seventies. And each one of those areas has changed, but a lot of it, because there hasn't been some form of development or it's been blocked, I've listened to special interests, and we could have had density thirty years ago along a Dunbar corridor, and those units now would be apartment buildings, whatever they were, two, three stories or four stories at that time. And they would all be available for some form of housing that accommodates transit, accommodates services. Businesses are just a few businesses, and they're surviving because there's a few of them. And we're one of them, and we're very lucky. But this is, this is a tremendous opportunity right now, from what I've observed. We're building on Main Street and have been building for four years, so I'm in the community all the time and watching it. And it's kind of a little gem, because it's outside of Main, there's some bigger properties that can be assembled, where you can't normally assemble those. On Main Street, that doesn't exist because there's all, it's very difficult to assemble unless you're bound by Thirty-third.
Right. So I guess just to clarify, though, is that you talked about millennials, and talked about canvassing your staff, and the importance of...
Before I came here, I bought, and we have forty, and they're all young, bright, smart.
So a project like this could be an opportunity for a young person, but also for seniors who want to downgrade?
They all seem to know each other. This is a little village. It doesn't matter if it's East Side or West Side. Everyone is kind of, it's weird. Everyone is kind of meshing together on this because they're all talking about projects like this. They don't want to live in Langley. Mum and dad's don't want to drive them and, or get to them. If it can make it work out, or others like this, they may need more than one. Hate to say it, but...
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. Councilor Kirby Young.
Hi, Mr. Buntain. Thanks for being here. Just have one question, and it's entirely your prerogative if you'd like to answer or not. But I do note that you mentioned you had three kids that lived in the area, and as well as a number of millennial staff.
I've got a granddaughter who I walk in, so I'm also walking Fraser Street down to, is at the school at Twenty-second and...
Okay, so you're very familiar, so, you know, from their, yeah, from their perspective, you know, as a dad of three kids, younger generation, and employer of the millennials, sort of twenty-five to forty, I think you said, are they looking for housing like this, they and your employees? Is this what you're hearing? And you don't have to reveal sort of the personal situation of your kids unless you want to talk about that.
No, no, they are. If not them, if they can get help, and I've been able to help my kids, they're able to get into some form of housing, but lots can't, and lots is a transition, having a place. And I was really intrigued, this says there was three bedrooms and four bedrooms, is that what I, yesterday and Tuesday I heard? That's really what's needed, not a bunch of one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, if there's kids, or you have a grandpa, a father, mother, they can live together. That's starting to happen right now because we're getting older, and we kind of want to hang out with our kids or grandkids.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much. No more questions. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
We have Rob McKay Dunn. Thanks for coming. Up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Rob McKay Dunn, and I'm here representing the Urban Development Institute. Before I get started, I believe this is my first time speaking to the current council here in chambers, so I wanted to extend my personal thanks on behalf of UDI for all the work that you do. I know you're in the midst of a bit of a marathon sprint for the first eight months after the election, and that continues tonight, so hopefully you're all looking forward to a bit of a breather come August. We look forward to continuing to work with all of you through the balance of your term, including on important opportunities like the citywide plan, the employment lands review, the Broadway Plan, and of course partnering to build more housing options, including much-needed rental options. Which brings me to tonight's discussion. I'm here to show our strong support for this proposal for 121 secure purpose-built rental homes, which will bring needed housing options and housing diversity to this Fraser Street neighborhood. As you know, this rental proposal is well situated, almost right in the geographic center of the city, with highly desirable access to the frequent transit network, local businesses, schools, and parks. The proposal has a good diversity of units with over 40% of the units geared towards families. The proposed rentals will be more economical relative to the majority of the housing options currently in the neighborhood, which are largely still single-family homes. We need more options across the rental continuum, and new market rental units help ease the pressure and free up existing rental stock. I also want to acknowledge the concerns of the local residents, and you certainly feel their passion here again this evening. But we also want to provide some perspective from a recent housing survey we've completed with Ipsos back in June. Specifically, the Ipsos survey found City of Vancouver residents, 75% want municipalities to approve more housing options within their single-family neighborhoods. 59% don't believe municipalities are doing enough to encourage more diverse housing options, including specifically mid-rise apartments like you're considering this evening. 69% believe home prices and rents remain high because there are too few housing options. They understand how scarcity is hurting rents. 83% want more housing options close to frequent transit. And finally, 70% said all governments aren't doing enough to encourage new rental homes, again, like the ones being proposed here this evening. I know these Ipsos survey results are largely consistent with recent work from Research Co. and other surveys as well. I empathize again with the local residents and feel the passion, but the data is pretty clear. Vancouverites are frustrated by the lack of rental housing options and overall are heavily supportive of new rental options in their neighborhoods and on transit. The proposal before you, if approved, would be a step to addressing this frustration. And in closing, we concur with your professional staff's recommendations to approve this proposal that could house 121 families and individuals, and we thank you again for the opportunity to provide our perspective.
Thanks very much. You have a couple of questions. Councilor Kirby Young?
Hi, Mr. McKay Dunn, thanks for being here. I have a question just about the Ipsos survey, because I know that people always ask, well, you know, question the source and sort of the validity of various surveys. So are you able to comment, because I know you said 75% want municipalities to approve more housing, rents are high because there are too few housing options, and all governments need to do, these are some things that stood out for me, more to develop more purpose-built rental. Are you able to confirm how statistically valid that supply is or who was surveyed? I know that's a question I hear a lot.
Absolutely. So it was an Ipsos survey, 1,000 residents across the province with an oversupply of Vancouver, so we could have statistically valid City of Vancouver results as well. And I've got copies with me and be happy to leave them.
Okay, so that is considered in sort of market research practices to be statistically valid for Vancouver?
Yes.
Okay, that was just a quick clarification, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Carr.
Yes, thanks very much, Mr. McKay Dunn, for being here, really appreciate that. So I don't disagree with the point you made about the fact that we need more supply of rental housing. But here's the challenge, and how would you answer this question? If the housing that's being built is going to rent at a level that is beyond the affordability of the majority of Vancouverites, or certainly 54% are already renters, but their average household renter income is under $50,000, how do we justify building that kind of housing or not enough of the rental rate housing that meets the needs of the income levels that are here?
So I think I'd answer it a couple of different ways. Certainly, there's a demand for this new market rental housing. All the buildings that have built in recent years are leased up very quickly, and we've actually talked to staff and some councillors about actually doing some lease-up surveys to find out where those individuals are coming from, because anecdotally, we know they're coming from other housing stock and freeing that up, availability of others. And so we'd be interested in partnering with the city on proving that out through some further research. And also, you know, I believe that we need more housing options across the continuum. So, you know, hopefully when the MRRP projects come back later this fall, we'll be back here standing in favor and supporting those, just like we've supported other housing options in recent months.
Yeah. I just, I'm still in a quandary though, around so many of the proposals that we do get end up just not meeting the income level needs of people who live here in Vancouver right now. So, you know, is it, I mean, this is beyond this particular project, I'm not going to go there. But if you're faced with looking at a project in a neighborhood, in a city where the incomes are at such a level, and the housing is coming in at a much higher level, requiring a much higher income to be affordable, do you not see that there's a quandary or a disconnect?
Well, without question, the economics of making rental viable is a challenge for all of us, and we need to work together. You know, I think we've hosted sessions recently where we've taken a look at that. And Coriolus has done a lot of great research for Metro Vancouver and others, demonstrating the different levers from a public policy perspective to help try and bring down and deepen that level of affordability. So there are levers out there. But again, in this context, on this project, it's clear there's a market need, and that will free up capacity along other aspects of the continuum.
And why is that? Do you think that people in housing that's more affordable right now are going to move into this housing? How does it free up housing?
Sure, people move up and down the housing ladder depending on life circumstances. Certainly, you know, there's a desire to live in a newer building with newer amenities. Certainly, as somebody moves through their career, certainly as they can potentially be able to afford a little bit more, wants to enter themselves into a building higher up the scale, potentially on that, up that ladder. So see it both ways. This could also be a great opportunity for somebody that's in a local, single-family home and is downsizing but doesn't want to leave their neighborhood.
So have you actually done any surveys? Has UDI actually collected data on where, what households, at what income level, end up moving out of current housing and to new rental?
And that's one of the things that we'd actually like to take a look at. We have anecdotal research and talking to our members about the types of individuals and families that are moving into their new rental buildings. But I don't think we've done a good job collaborating with government to try and pull that data out in aggregate, and I think that would be something that would be really useful and inform this discussion moving forward.
I agree.
Thanks very much. Councilor Bly.
Hi, Mr. McKay Dunn, thanks for being here. And for also, this discussion continuing on from Councilor Carr, anecdotally, I am one of those people that was able to move into newer stock and free up older rental stock prior to getting elected. So that conversation is something that we've been bringing, I've been bringing to the table for some time, because I actually think that trickle-down economics, although it's widely, it is unpopular with some housing advocates, it is a lever we can pull around densifying in a strategic way, not the only one, but I think it's significant. So, all that being said, I think, well, my question is, we look at these projects in silo simply because of the process and public hearings. And yet, I'm curious if developers do the same thing. Because we're talking about supply, we're really talking about the right supply, and that is actually, many different kinds of supply would be the right supply versus one kind of supply, which I think is what we're also hearing. It might be, without putting words, and Councilor Carr's, you know, we absolutely need more below-market rental, for sure, we all agree. But how does it work in terms of the economics for developers when they are looking at a project like this that could help build that below-market housing in a different location? Could you speak to that?
I'm not a site acquisition specialist, but my understanding and working with many of our members is that there's basically a checklist that goes through when they're evaluating a site, and they look everything from the context of the regional policy context, the municipal policy context, the zoning context, what are they actually able to build on? And then they go through an evaluation of obviously what the land costs and how they could try and fill the need of the neighborhood with a certain product. So that's my understanding of how that kind of logic works over time.
Okay, so let me ask my question a little bit clearer, I don't think I was fully clear. Are projects dependent on one another within one organization when it comes to financial viability of the overall organization?
That's a good question. I have not worked in a development company. They obviously have a portfolio of projects that they're moving forward at any given time, but it also, I think, depends on the scale of the builder.
Okay, okay, I'll direct my question that way, thank you.
Thanks very much. Councilor Hardwick.
Hi there. I just, before launching into my core questions, I just want to establish that the UDI is in fact a lobbying organization on behalf of the property development industry.
We have three core functions. We are public policy, advocacy, and research, so you can quantify that as lobbying if you like. We also have professional development, education, and events components.
With the ultimate aim of the furthering of the objectives of the property development industry.
And we represent industrial, commercial, residential builders, and the associated professions.
Great, thank you, I just wanted to establish that. This particular development is predicated on the Affordable Housing Choices Interim Rezoning Policy, 2012, last amended in 2018. And the criteria established for the interim rezoning policy is, number one, affordability. Projects must demonstrate an enhanced level of affordability. And so, notwithstanding the range that we've been talking about, I think we would be challenged to see this as enhanced level of affordability, but I'm open to debate on that or further input. And then number two is location and form of development, subject to urban design performance, including consideration of shadow analysis, view impacts, frontage length, building massing setbacks, et cetera, and demonstration of a degree of community support. So those being the key criterion that would allow this development to go forward, I see challenges in those two areas, both the affordability and the location and form of development, particularly what we've heard in terms of demonstration of a degree of community support.
We move to a question.
So two things I'd like to know from you. One is how do you address the affordability piece? And two, from the perspective of the Urban Development Institute and working with its member entities, what are you thinking about in terms of working with communities to build some trust towards establishing community support? Because it seems to me that that's something that keeps coming up for us is lack of community support in this and other applications within this category.
So I think to the community engagement piece, you know, certainly with your background, you could probably provide a lecture on community engagement and consultation. It's about getting down in coffee meetings, and we encourage all of our members to engage the community early and often, and trying to work with the community on a shared vision for their project. So that's something that, you know, certainly that is part of our professional development, our educational courses, our school development that we provide on an annual basis, is exactly that kind of grassroots engagement that needs to happen. It has to build trust and those relationships over time. So I think there's an exciting opportunity, again, through the citywide process to really kind of bring renewed energy and focus to that. And so that's where I would, if a member were to come to me and ask for advice, that's where I'd steer them, is back to, you know, hitting up the local coffee shops on Fraser and making sure you're making as many point of contacts as possible.
And the affordability piece?
The A-word. You know, this is a more economical option than what exists currently in the single-family home neighborhood. The challenges, you know, with affordability is that it's very subjective, and it doesn't take into consideration the individuals or the family's means. And so, you know, it's one of those, I think the mayor mentioned earlier, those cloudy areas that we try and stay away of. What we do focus on is trying to work in collaboration to find those deeper levels of affordability. And so, you know, there's lots of discussions about how that can be done with municipal and provincial and federal tools. And we're always working with your staff to try and explore those opportunities, and we're looking forward to when staff reports back in the coming weeks on the incentives review that's currently underway.
I thank you for that. I think we have a policy issue that we have to deal with in defining what enhanced level of affordability means. And I'm encouraged that the UDI would be working with their members to work on their practices around public consultation, so thank you.
Hundred percent.
Thanks very much. Councilor DeGenova.
I just had a quick question also to clarify that, in fact, UDI, although it was asked already what the mandate and membership was, I just didn't hear it, but your membership also includes nonprofit members, is that correct? And builds housing from shelter rate to affordable rates as well, is that correct?
Absolutely. If you've followed us in recent months, we've been out advocating everything from temporary modular housing to nonprofit housings that have not been successful all the way through the spectrum, and we will continue to do so.
Okay, and then, I'm not sure, and you don't have to answer this question, but to one of the other speakers' points and something that I'm just kind of having some experience in the industry and nonprofit and for-profit, if we don't build housing continually, that housing that was talked about in 35 years, 25 years, won't be there because we didn't build it at this time, is that correct? Is that, would UDI say, I mean, do you have a position on, like, the ramifications of stopping that? I mean, has there been any work done on that?
Well, I think there's been a lot of research. In fact, I think I saw, we posted out something today, research that's showing of the pent-up demand for rental because we didn't build it for 30 years. Let's not put ourselves in that situation again. In fact, you know, I kind of, you know, if we're sensing a for-market strata kind of slowdown in building, let's be opportunistic and use that as an opportunity to build more rental.
Okay, thanks. And UDI also, I mean, I've received letters from UDI in the past on past projects, as of all councillors, or council members, I should say, this term and previous term. It's my understanding that in fact, our staff have engaged and worked with UDI to try and find ways to work with the development community. For example, I remember putting forward a motion on the short program, which would expedite permitting and find ways to make housing more affordable that doesn't necessarily always have to include density, but the permitting process, would you say that you also partner with municipalities in trying to find those ways forward?
Getting a little off...
Well, I'm asking because we're, well, I kind of felt that the membership question was...
You're right.
An interesting one, sorry.
I missed that one, but I'm catching it here.
I'm just trying to understand the scope of what was presented, so that's fine, I'll withdraw that question. I just wanted to know if you were involved in working with our staff, but not on this one. Thank you for reminding me.
Do my best here, thank you. Okay, that's it for questions, thank you again.
Thank you again.
We have two more speakers, Tamera Taggart, number 29, and Toby Dent, number 30. Thanks for coming in tonight, and up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart, and members of council for the opportunity to provide my perspective on the decision before you. My name is Tamera Taggart. I was born and raised in Vancouver, and although I'm a candidate in the upcoming federal election, I am here as a concerned resident, a mother of three, and as someone deeply concerned about our city's housing crisis. I left my family home when I was 15 years old, and after couch surfing for a while, I became a renter and I rented for about 20 years. I understand what it's like to be evicted, I understand what it's like to find roommates, I understand what it's like to not make your rent, and I really understand what it's like to try to find a place to live. I know how unsettling it is to not have the security of a home. It was tough then, and it's even harder now. And I can't imagine what it will be like for my three children in about 10, 12, 15 years when they start looking for rental properties. I also stand... I also stand here understanding my privilege. My husband and I were able to buy a home 15 years ago, and we live with our children just off of Main Street. We all have an important role to play, and I appreciate your commitment to city building and democratic engagement. I am here today to speak in favor of the proposed rental housing development at 38-33 Fraser Street. I'm not a housing expert, but I do know that people need a place to call home. I'm passionate about inclusion in this city, and I am concerned about rental housing in particular. We live in a diverse city, and this council has a responsibility to meet the demands of our challenging housing needs. I commend each of you for the important steps that you have taken to strengthen renters' rights with new protections, like the bold steps you have taken to improve the quality of life in our SROs. We need to build a Vancouver where everyone can live and work. If we're going to build a truly inclusive Vancouver, we can't simply shrug our shoulders when it comes to rental housing. It's time for leadership. This project is an important part of providing housing for working-class and middle-class Vancouverites. These 121 rental units will provide a place to call home for 121 families, schoolteachers, transit workers, small business owners and entrepreneurs. Even at the market rates proposed, these homes are more affordable to many than homeownership. Single-family homes in the Fraser neighborhood are on the market for almost $2 million. People in this city need a range of housing options. In fact, 51% of Vancouver's residents are renters. Fraser is a great neighborhood. This project is walking distance to two transit lines. It's close to schools, shopping, and other amenities, and I believe projects like this help make a neighborhood. I believe that as a city, we need to provide places for people to live, and that includes renters. If we are not prepared to deliver housing here, then where? No one building can solve all the complexities of Vancouver's housing crisis. Every investment and each site contribute to delivering a range of housing options. We are at an important juncture in shaping the future of Vancouver. The provincial and federal governments are finally at the table with funding and programs to build housing here. The city needs to play its role in delivering these projects, and you have been doing this with modular housing, supports for co-ops, the Community Land Trust, cohousing, and support for tenant relocation policies. Building market rental housing is also an important part of a healthy housing supply. I'm proud to welcome new neighbors in our community. I support the building of new rental housing, and I invite you to do the same. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And I don't see, oh, there's a couple of questions there. One second. Thanks. Councilor DeGenova, please go ahead.
We both drew at the same time. Thank you very much for coming, Ms. Taggart. In specifically talking about the federal government and the commitment to housing, I understand that this project isn't looking for any type of commitment to housing, but as we, Vancouver is the third least affordable city in the world consistently. And one of the reasons I decided to rerun for city council is I have a 22-month-old daughter, and I'd like her to be able to afford housing one day in the city of Vancouver. So we have to look at each project individually, but in this project and looking at this and hearing, you know, some of the other speaker comments, I'm going to ask you the same question I've asked others. Do you think that, is there a better place? I have to ask specifically about this project. I can't move it down the road because that landowner isn't applying here tonight. That's the way this works. Someone comes and applies for this. So would you advise that, I mean, we are listening to the community, I'm also seeing a lot of positive responses. How do you respond to that? Like, would you say that this massing is out of character for the neighborhood and the community, especially as we move towards our big citywide plan and looking at greater density for greater population in our city, which I would assume, because our population's only going up?
Well, I reflect on 33-33 Main Street, which is a block from my house. It used to be Coastal Ford. And when the land was sold and there was going to be a five-story building with full commercial underneath, people in our neighborhood were very upset, and everyone was against it. It is a hub for our neighborhood now. There's a shoppers' drug mart underneath, there's a bank underneath, there's, I don't know how many units in there. I think they're all to own, but it has helped create a neighborhood. There's a park out front and all of those little things, not a huge park, but a little grass patch that, you know, we go sit at with our kids. But it was very upsetting. It is towering in our neighborhood. But I also understand that I live a half a block from 16th. I live in the city, and so everyone can see in my backyard because I'm surrounded by taller neighbors, apartment buildings.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask you about the amenity space in here, too. There is amenity space, and it's been noted by some people that are excited for that space within the building for, I would suppose, future residents if this moves forward. As people move away from being able to have backyards and looking at things like, I think they're, I think we're calling them parklets, the smaller parks, are becoming more of a place where people will use greensbays, take their kids to play. Our libraries and community centers are becoming the living rooms for people who have smaller living spaces. Do you think that amenity space like this encourages family living? And like, for 100, do you think that it's sufficient for 121 fam, well, not all family units, but 121?
Well, there is a park right there. There's a park very close to where the building is proposed.
Which was mentioned. So I wanted to ask.
Yeah, there's parks all over in Vancouver Kingsway and up Main Street. We have, it's not hard to find a park in our neighborhoods.
I used to live at Main and 33rd, so I understand, but again, wanted to ask you some of the questions I've asked others. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Councilor Carr.
Yes, thanks, Ms. Taggart, for coming in. Appreciate it very much. Just a couple of questions. This particular application is coming in under a very specific program. So it's about offering housing choices, and it's an interim program, but it's supposed to entice some new and innovative ideas or ways to provide affordable housing, right? And it has criteria. So one of the criteria of the program is, and I quote just what it says in the actual program, is a contextual fit with neighboring development. So many of the people who are the neighbors have come to say they don't believe it fits contextually in their area. So how would you handle that discrepancy?
Well, I mean, I sympathize because I understand, because I think we all are faced at times with choices that are hard. And I know that in our neighborhood, we have been with the building I just mentioned, and they're kitty-cornered to where we live. There's another development going up, and it's hard. But I also, I mean, I feel strongly about, everybody deserves a place to live, and we have a crisis on our hands. And to turn away 121 possible units, to me, is hard to wrap my head around because there's so many people that need a place to live. So, I mean, I do understand what it's like to, you know, feel like it's too big and too much. We have a big one on Main Street, and the other development at Main and Kingsway, where the car dealership is, that was huge, and it was also, it's way bigger. I think it's 12 stories high. So, you know, it's, like I said before, if not here, where? Like, neighborhoods change.
The other thing that, not, there's other criteria, but one of the other criteria for this program is that it must, a project must demonstrate enhanced level of affordability. Beyond that, provided through the delivery of a generally more affordable housing type, like rental housing. So it's an enhanced level of affordability. So you have correctly said there is a housing crisis. We have built more housing in this city and more rental housing than ever in the last 10 years, but it's not been affordable for the vast majority of people who are renters in the city. So again, how would you handle the dilemma there, where we keep building housing, but it's just not a fat level of affordability to meet the needs of people?
Right. I think there's different pieces of the puzzle, and this is one piece of the puzzle. And yes, $2,000 a month is unaffordable to a lot of people, but it is also affordable to people. So when those people move in, it's, as the gentleman before me mentioned, it is, you know, you open up other spaces. As Councilor Bly mentioned, this is what happened with her, and that is just a piece of the puzzle, and we have to provide all the pieces so that we can, because not everybody needs a place to rent for $500 a month. We need all different levels of it. People have different needs. So I think that this is a piece, an important piece in the puzzle. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Weeb.
Yes, the urban design panel talked about the amenity space in the building and saying that we are in a time of isolation in the city and that we should probably put more amenity space in buildings like that. Do you agree that built form can play a big component of making people feel less isolated, and that we should really push projects to deliver more amenity space for neighbors to meet?
I mean, when I look at Main Street and Fraser Street, and I assume, it won't be long before Fraser Street is like Main Street. Main is super vibrant, it, it's busy all the time with pedestrians. I feel safe all the time walking up and down Main Street, and Fraser is starting to be like that, too. And I, you know, from the hundreds of people that live in that building at 18th and Main, there's people out all the time. And when I said, I believe projects like this help make a neighborhood, that's why. People come out, they go in. I have a building across the street from me that has eight units in it. People are moving in and out of that place monthly, and, you know, I meet them all. And so, I mean, I think amenities are important, yes, but I also, we live in a city where our amenities are, you walk out your front door and there's amenities everywhere. We live in a beautiful spot where most of us are outside all the time.
All right, thank you. Thanks very much. Councilor Kirby Young.
Hi. Hi, Ms. Taggart. Thanks for being here. A number of the speakers have suggested, and I think this is one of the things that council are challenged with when considering applications like this, that we need the broader citywide plan. I'm sure you're aware that that's something that's a priority for this council about to undertake, but some folks and some speakers today have suggested that we should pause and not proceed with projects like this in absence of having the defined citywide plan. Those projects can, that can obviously take a period of time. What's your perspective? How do you answer that in terms of halting while we wait for citywide plan versus trying, moving along concurrently and having those processes go along?
I think that if that building were to have the rentals available tomorrow, they would all be rented within the next week. So to pause this, in my opinion, is to pause people having a home. So I don't think it should be paused. I think that this is what we need, and we need more of it everywhere.
Okay. Regardless of sort of what comes forth in the citywide plan that we have to meet the housing need at the same time.
I believe in rental housing at all levels.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Councilor Hardwick.
Hi there.
Hi.
So you believe in all housing everywhere. Do we listen to residents, our constituents within neighborhoods?
Absolutely. You have a difficult job ahead of you. You have to listen to the residents and their concerns. You know, you have, you can say no, but you have a responsibility to say yes.
And do we listen to the policies that we're supposed to be applying, or do we just go ahead and disregard those because it will trickle down?
I didn't tell you to disregard anything. I didn't mention to disregard anything.
Okay, so we have, as Councilor Carr pointed out, we have a policy that we are trying to match this particular development to. And there are criteria that are associated with that. And I'm looking at this right now, and I'm seeing things that do not align with the policy. So that's where, you know, because the devil is in the details. We can't just make these sort of broad generalizations. We have to look at these projects with specificity. So as much as, you know, we can hear things like, well, we need to have development, and then we'll have trickle-down, what we're doing right here is looking at very specific use cases of whether developments meet specific requirements set out under policies. So my question, then, back to you, is understanding that there are policies in place, the two criteria are affordability, enhanced level of affordability, that is in there, underlined, underscored, enhanced level of affordability, which gives them the capability to go to this FSR. Secondarily, location and form of development, which, as I've mentioned before, is size and massing, but also demonstrating a degree of community support. So given those two key criteria, enhanced level of affordability and location and form of development on this specific project, can you give us commentary about those two items, please?
So we are talking about affordability, because I heard earlier we weren't.
I just read out affordability, project must demonstrate an enhanced level of affordability. That's number one.
Okay.
Do you want to take enhanced level of affordability first?
I think that it's, I think that it is affordable for quite a few people. So, I mean, what do you want from me? I'm trying to, you know...
Enhanced level of affordability...
You don't actually have to answer questions.
I'm not going to answer that question.
Okay. Well, enhanced level of affordability presumably means it's more affordable for people. And what about demonstration of a degree of community support?
I think that there are some, I think you need to listen. Are you asking me what I think you should do, or should, I sympathize with the people that have stood before me and are concerned about this development.
So it's, right now, it's at 121 units and seven stories, six stories. There's a bit of a debate about that. If it were four or five or six stories and we were getting 100 units instead of 121 units, would that be acceptable to your way of looking at things? Because we are really coming down to the finer points and trying to determine the appropriateness of this development.
Right.
So is it a broad statement, or can we get into the specificity?
I don't think I, I'm not here to get into the specifics of it. I'm here to provide my support, my perspective, and my concern for rental availability in this city. There is no rental availability.
So just a broad statement, not specific to this project?
I'm sorry, I'm not clear on what it is that you're looking for from me. So, next question?
Well, no, those were the questions, because those are the ones that are associated with this development.
I think we've talked about affordability.
I think we just take that tone down here a little bit, but we're, I thank you for the questions. Do you have any?
No, those are the two criterion that I'm trying to...
I had a bit of a reply, thanks very much, on the Councilor Bly.
Thank you very much. And maybe just to try and balance some of this conversation around the policy, how would you quantify a degree of community support?
Well, that's an interesting question. I mean, the, you know, the people living directly around it, yes, I would be concerned too if I lived there. Of course I would, just like I was super concerned about the building that went in.
Okay, that's helpful. So the demonstration of a degree of community support, which is what Council Hardwick is referencing, you would, because again, it's a bit of an affordability, it's subjective once again, so these policies, although hope to be as finite as possible, are actually quite, there are parts of it, which there's many, many detailed, clear direction that this policy, there's just a couple places where these ambiguous statements are made that then are a really contentious point, because degree of community support can mean different things to different people.
Yes, so does affordability.
As does affordability. Thank you, that's all.
Great, thanks. And that's it for questions. Thank you for coming in. Last speaker is Toby Dent. Hi. Please go ahead.
As the table descends, I'm a resident on 21st Avenue, and I've been there for 21 years. I'm a retired teacher from David Livingstone. I love the area I live in. I have a small house on the street, and I grow lots of veggies in my backyard. have a small house on the street, and I grow lots of veggies in my backyard. And you're invited to come and taste and look at the area. My concerns are overall plan, height, density, affordability, community support. It doesn't seem as though there is an overall plan for places like Fraser Street, as cars speed up and down the street, and they do between 19th and 25th, as developers swallow up huge blocks of land before getting a permit to change the zoning and build ever taller apartment buildings that are definitely not affordable housing for the people who need it the most. Why is this happening? One developer told me he's doing it strictly for the money, nothing else. I go to all the proposals for projects where there's some information for their project, but really no interest in the actual neighborhood. How can they do this? Why would they try and put an oversized building in a neighborhood that has four-story buildings up and down the street? Four stories seem to fit into the area. Seven stories does not. I think affordability is really very important here for a one-bedroom. For $2,000 a month, give me a break. I have two daughters, one of whom is leaving the city because she can't afford it. The other one splits a two-bedroom for $1,650 with her partner on Robson Park. So I'm against this project. And also, you know, five minutes isn't enough to get a feeling for the neighborhood. And I don't feel properly consulted, and I would love to have some more feedback on the city planning. And there was a, something going by this week, the zoning law, the change in the zoning law, because up to 20th, it's single-family dwelling. And I'd like to know if you're changing single-family zoning throughout the whole city. I see so many buildings going up, up and up and up, everywhere I go, and houses being renovated, and houses being, being destroyed, and new houses are being built, everywhere you go. You're building, building, building. It's incredible. On the west side, though, apartment buildings are more like four stories. On the east side, well, there's this catastrophe on King's Way and Broadway, which is what, 23 stories high? The whole community was against this project, and they built it anyway. And it's, it's, it's just, bah! So, that's my story.
Okay, thanks very much. Two questions, councillor Weeb. Just to remind everybody, just to keep it to this particular project, that's the goal of the hearing tonight. Please go ahead, councillor Weeb.
Hello, thanks for coming in today. You talked about a beautiful veggie garden, and one of the things talked about is amenity space on the top level, maybe having a community veggie garden. Do you think that's a great way to help the neighbors in this building, if it gets built, be connected?
It's okay, but it's better on the ground.
Okay. Second, as an owner in the area, there's a comment that maybe there should be a corner cutoff for a dog area so that people could allow their dogs to pee if there's a lot of pets in the area. Is there a lot of dogs in the area?
There are a lot of dogs in the area, and there's David Livingstone Park where a lot of dogs go to pee.
Okay, so that's a good piece, but. Second one, for the art component of it, there's been talk that maybe it could be utilized to celebrate the history of the site or to talk about the area. Is that something you'd like to see is the art money, if this project went forward, be utilized to really celebrate the history of the area or of the shop?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you very much for coming today.
Thanks very much, councillor Hardwick.
Hi there.
Hi.
Listening to you, you've lived here a long time. You've seen a lot of change over time, and you do acknowledge that change is inevitable and the only constant. So you do acknowledge that the site is going to get developed?
Yes, four stories.
Okay, so, so it's...
Affordable housing, excuse me, affordable housing, seri, really affordable housing. Now, come on!
Yeah, but what if, again, you got to make the numbers work, right? So, you know, I'm presuming that it's seven stories because they're trying to make the numbers work.
Yes, that's right.
So what if they can't make the numbers work at four stories?
Well, then they shouldn't be building there.
I don't have a comeback for that one.
Go ahead.
Is there anything I'd like to say? Because that's really, I needed to know that you acknowledged the change was, was going to happen. I needed you to know that you acknowledged that we're, something's going to get built there that's going to add density. And I think, I think you would also agree that there is a need for rental accommodation in the city.
Yes, there is, but there's a, there's a lot of building going on. Is it all condo? Or is it a lot of rental, too?
I think, again, I think everybody agree that it's, it's a question of building the right supply. So your objection is height here, but generally, you're, you acknowledge that there needs to be development and rental.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you, and that's it for questions. Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, council, so that's the end of the list. I'm going to go to my other script now. So, so I was just going to call from the audience if anybody else would like to speak to this. Okay. Any, have up to five minutes, and just please state your name at the beginning. If you could spell your last name, that would be great.
My name is Mando.
Okay, clerk will help you with that.
My name is Michael Hardwick.
Don't do that.
Let's see if I'm organized here before I get my five minutes down.
I haven't started yet, yep. Just, okay. You all set?
I'll take this down a little bit smaller, please.
Okay. There we go. There we go.
I'll make sure I got my water. Okay, now, you're nervous.
All right, ahead.
Okay, my name is Grace McKenzie, and I want to talk about one, two, three, four, five different topics. The view cone. Why don't I see the Fraser Street number 24 view cone mentioned in this council report? The Fraser Street number 24 view cone is considered non-threatening unless there are rezoning changes, zoning changes. There are zoning changes pending because of this project. The council report says this is a high building. The Vancouver View study by Busby Architects makes recommendations on non-threatening view cones, which Fraser Street is. It says, "Development proposals should include specific detailed analysis of view impact prior to rezoning." I'd like to see this happen before this rezoning is considered. The intent for RT2 zones. The council report lists relevant council policies for this site. The RT, the RT2 district schedule is listed. The intent of the district schedule is to build two-and-a-half-story buildings with an FSR between .75 and .85. This is what people will expect to be built in the area. So when the city unilaterally changes the policies, as they did with the affordable housing choices interim rezoning policy, of course, people will be concerned, and so they should be. The report doesn't list the following relevant RT2 multiple dwelling guidelines or the secured market rental housing policy, but they should have. These two policies show that the intent of development in this zone is for a site the size, this site, the size of point, is, is the size of .30 hectares, and it is only 18 units to be allowed here. And in the RT zone, an increase of FSR for secured market rental would only be 1.45 FSR. That was in the Galler report, too. Why does planning cherry pick only the policies that benefit the development and not give all the relevant policies so that council can have a fair chance to make an informed decision? The intent of allowing only a maximum of two affordable housing zoning applications within 10 blocks is to maintain neighborhood character. Look at the standing committee meeting on October 3, 2012. That's where it says that. Rents. Why aren't the rents listed in the council report? Planning has the opportunity of simply quoting the rents listed in the DLC bylaw or the rental incentive guidelines. It's not like they have to struggle to find base rent that might be expected in this project. Did they not want council to know the rents? You know, urban design panel. One panelist was concerned about the transition to the west neighborhood. So am I. East 22nd and 23rd slopes greatly to the west down the hill. This proposed building will look much taller than seven stories when looking at it from the west. This proposal is as tall as the historic Lee Building at Main and Broadway. That's seven stories. That's how tall this is going to be. Let's get real. This is no way, there is no way a building that tall should be in a zone that has two-and-a-half-story buildings all around it. I mean, it's just not urban design right. I mean, get, you know, come on. An idiot like me can knows that. Okay. Too many details are undecided in this project. This project is not ready to be approved at public hearing. Before making decisions on this project, please look at the conditions of approval appendix B, pages 1 to 15. It says, "The director of planning may allow minor alterations." This is what really happens. The director of planning has unilateral discretion to change whatever he wants that is not written in stone at public hearing. It is not an acceptable practice that a staffer has so much control over a development. But this council must change this policy. You need to change the zoning and development bylaw so that the director of planning and his staff no longer have the power to change developments after public hearing. Otherwise, these public hearings will continue to be a sham. I am opposed to this project.
Thank you very much. That's five minutes right on. Thank you.
When I did it at home, it was four minutes and 10 seconds.
It goes by fast.
But I stuttered, I'm nervous here.
You're doing good, but you have a question from councillor Kirby Young.
Actually, no, I rang in for questions of staff before I realized we had another speaker, Mr. Moore.
Okay, uh, okay, great, thanks. Councillor Weeb?
Great to see you. And always, your information on view cones. It's not easy to find view cone 24. It's not on van maps and others. Is that...
It's because it's a non-threatening view cone.
So non-threatening view cones aren't there?
We're in the view study.
I really appreciate the amount of knowledge you have and the stuff you gave us.
I know, you always say that, Mike, I appreciate you saying that.
Thanks for coming today.
I always try and do my research before I open my mouth, because I don't like to bullshit.
And you do really well, and I really appreciate the information you've given to all the councillors. Thank you.
Thank you. Got a question?
No, I was just trying to find that view cone, because you always provide me information that I can't find.
So the one I gave you?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in the Vancouver View study.
Yeah.
There's a booklet with all the views in it. I have that booklet, so...
Yeah, I was just looking, because...
You won't be able to get it, because you'll have to ask the planning department for it, and it's in their archives or library. Should be.
Yeah. And then the, the stories, I mean, you talked about being similar to the Lee Building. What do you see fit in this property? What would your mix of the community?
I would go with the .30 hectares and 18 units. I mean, that's what could be, no problem. That's what should go here. I mean, if you want to fit it into the neighborhood.
Okay.
I mean, you, your planning department did a brilliant job on that particular, the RT multiple dwelling guidelines, where it says about the hectares and so on. Lots and lots of work was put into that. It's not just something... The problem what we have right here with this affordable housing thing is that Brian Jackson was, the previous director of planning...
We just don't want to...
Was told to do something, so he threw this out, and now we're dealing with it.
We're not talking about individuals here, just about this project, so.
Thank you, Grace, appreciate it.
Now, this project is the affordable rental housing.
It is, but we're just...
And that's the problem.
Not imputing other people's reputations, that's the key here.
Well, I didn't just say...
Thanks very much, that's it for questions.
The guy was forced into it by Vision Vancouver.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else want to speak to this? Yes, sir? We have a couple of speakers.
Sorry, I don't really have a speech prepared, but...
That's okay, just state your name, and you've got up to five minutes.
I'm Benjamin Sampson, and I'm a fine art photographer, and I just wanted to speak to the amenity value of the public art project. It, it could be used, and used well, to tell the stories of the, of the local community, tell, tell the history of the, of the Walter Crayf, of the Bourdain family, of Alec Automotive. We could, that budget could have real value for the surrounding community and as a way to introduce newcomers into a building like this to the culture and history and values of the neighborhood. So it does represent real value. It's not...
Okay. Thanks very much for your thoughts. Sir, did you want to say something? Same thing, up to five minutes?
I'd like to start by thanking mayor and council for this opportunity, and I'm always quite impressed by your dedication and the fact that you work all the way up to 10 and later in some cases, and multiple nights on these hearings. It's very impressive, and as a citizen of Vancouver, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Sorry, did you state your name earlier?
My name is Alexander Wright. I'm a resident of East Vancouver.
Okay.
And I'm here to support this application. I'm supporting it primarily because it's providing about 120 homes. Secured rental housing is very important for a city. I think there's a real shortage of it. It's something Vancouver needs, along with various other forms of, of housing as well. I, I wanted to talk a little bit about form, the, and the context of this development. Lots of people have had differing opinions on it. My own background is, I spent about five years in London, in England, and the last year I was living there, I lived on a block that, I was living in a townhouse, a shared townhouse or a row house, I guess they call them over there. And across the street, there was a three-to-six-story affordable council flat. And then down at the end of the block, there was kind of two-level row homes, and net right next to them, there was a nine-story and I think a 10-story market rental apartment buildings. And there's, the, the row house I was living in had a little backyard that everyone could see in, and you could wave your neighbors, and I'm sure everyone in all the apartments could see exactly one I was out there having something to eat or just enjoying the outdoors. I never found it to be, I never found the presence of the taller buildings to be imposing or looming or negative or, or any of these things. I think actually it's a fairly natural, if somewhat sawtooth order of things. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that and that's spoken from, from personal experience. And I guess I wanted to talk about, not affordability, because that's too complex, but just kind of the housing problems that our, our city faces. And, you know, in a perfect world, I guess, there would be a community plan or a city plan, rather, that would be in place, and this application would possibly be tied to that. But I think progress for our city is going to be fractional, and it's going to be imperfect, right? This is 120 units. It's not going to solve the, the housing problems. It's not. It's going to be a very tiny, tiny, tiny piece of a solution. I, I believe that's why I'm here, supporting it. And I think if we get caught up in trying to hold out for the perfect use of a site, or a site that is perfect, and maybe if the slope was different on this site, it'd be better, and maybe if it was located higher up or lower on the hill, it'd be better, and maybe, like I say, if there was a city plan, maybe that'd be better, too. Maybe it would be perfect. But I think if we hold up for perfection, we're not going to get there. We're not going to make progress. And I think this is a very good application, and I think it will provide homes for people, secure... secured rental homes, which is really important. And that's basically all I wanted to say, and I feel very strongly about this. I think rental housing is, is very important, and there's other forms of housing that are also important, but I, I support this application.
Thanks very much. Questions from councillor Hardwick?
Hi there. So, do you live in the neighbourhood?
I live in Mount Pleasant.
Sir, you don't have to answer questions that you feel uncomfortable with.
No, that's fine.
I'm just trying to establish, so you live in Vancouver, you don't live in this particular neighbourhood, but you do live in Vancouver.
Yeah, I spend time here, though. I, I'll go up there on a weekend, yeah.
And do you work in the property development industry?
I do, yeah.
Okay. So you're bringing your expertise to, to the conversation?
I'm not really speaking from that perspective, not, not really. I'm, I'm speaking more as someone who's lived in a variety of cities, Vancouver, Toronto, London, little town, tiny towns, kind of all over North America. But if you wanted to ask me a question in that context, I could, I could weigh in.
Well, the, the two questions that I have were first about the affordability piece, which you, you just acknowledged is complex, and the second part was about how we're reconciling the details of this development in terms of height and massing, and then the, the community buy-in part of it. So, but you have expertise, so could you comment at least on, on the height and massing aspect of it? Because I'm, I know you said there's no such thing as perfection, but, but the devil is in the details when it comes to this kind of development.
I think the, the massing is fine. I think it's, it's transitioned relatively well as far as the building step back, stepping back on the lane. I totally get that if you're living in a two or three storey home, that having a larger building built beside you could be alarming, could be unsettling, could be unusual if you live in Vancouver. I think it is unusual, and it's only now becoming more common to have a real mix of different forms. So I appreciate that, like, I genuinely do. But I, I think the building is well-designed. That is, is my opinion. And I don't think the building placed in the context of this neighbourhood is, is over the top or inappropriate. I, that's, that's my opinion.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
There you go. Anybody else? Great. Do you...
Thank you.
State your name, and you have up to five minutes.
Great. Hi, my name is Louise Chow, and I just want to come out as a renter in support of this project. Currently, I'm renting a below-market suites, and as is my partner. As our life circumstances change and we're thinking of moving in together, we find that we could feasibly live in a building at market rental rate and free up the suites that we currently occupy. The cost is not our ideal, but we're not really able to do ideal these days. And I'm sure there are other people like myself who are working professionals combining incomes with other working professionals and progressing in our careers. People who are vital to the city, who would appreciate the choice that this rental project would provide.
Oh, okay. Thanks very much, and there's no questions, and...
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in tonight. Anybody else want to have a go? So I've called once, I'm going to call again. Anybody else like to speak to this application? Okay, third time? You have to come down? Yep. Yeah, if anybody else wants to speak, and you're upstairs, come on down now. Any more election candidates? Hello, sir? Please just state your name. If you could spell the last name, that would be great. And you have up to five minutes.
Thanks. Larry Kazdan. Last name is K-A-Z-D-A-N. I'm a resident of East 23rd. I oppose the project. I think the criteria, as has been mentioned, is enhanced affordability, and also fitting into the neighbourhood and support of the community. And it seems to me it should be pretty clear that there is no enhanced affordability, and there's a significant opposition by the community. So I think this project should be rejected. Despite the fact that, yes, we all agree we need development, we all agree that there's a rental shortage, but there's a specific policy. We're talking about this specific site, this specific project, and it doesn't meet the criteria of the policy. So it's quite clear to me it should be rejected, despite the fact that, yes, the whole development community wants it. And it was interesting that one of your speakers, who supports the project, admitted at the end of her speech that if she lived near the project, yes, she would have very great concerns about it. And that should illustrate to you that it does not have community support. So I hope that you will send this back for revisions and come up with something that fits the site and is acceptable to the community. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, sir. Okay.
Can I leave?
Yeah, that's, no questions for you, thank you. Any, anybody else on the third call now? Don't see anybody. Okay. So, right, so seeing there are no more speakers, the speakers list is now closed. As few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff, and to make a decision. So, looks like we're good there. So, does the applicant have any closing comments?
Mayor and council, I'll reintroduce myself. I'm Riley Marie. I work on behalf of the applicant's strand. To start off on my closing remarks, there was a couple of items that I just wanted to address that came up throughout the evening. The first of which was the scale of the model. I wanted to confirm that every model that, including this one that's submitted to the City of Vancouver, is at a specified scale and it's certified by an architect. So that includes this model. The second point that I wanted to mention was the building height, and I thought it would be informative to explain how the building came to be as a bit of background because there seems to be a lot of talk about seven stories, but I think that that is misleading. So, as we're aware, the building has a commercial component, and when that was implemented into the project, the heights of the residential units along the lane were about 20 feet high. So those units could have been one-bedroom units with 20-foot-high ceilings, and the building technically would have been, for visual purposes, a six-story building. What we decided, because we had 20 feet of ceiling height, is that we could add extra bedrooms, and so those became townhouses that are family-oriented and now have two bedrooms. So that's how the height came about. Concerning the overall height of the building, the building is 71 and a half feet, and if you go to the City of Vancouver's rezoning website, and you look at approved rezonings in the Canby Corridor, which is an established plan with established design guidelines, you'd see that a number of six-story buildings are 72 feet, 71 feet, and 70 feet. So this building is the same height as other six-story buildings, and so I just wanted to, to clarify that. Otherwise, I, just a little bit about the company that I work for. We have 250 secured market rental units under construction in the City of Vancouver right now, with about another 500 that are proposed and at various stages of approvals that we would like to build. We're very committed to building rental apartments as we strongly believe that there is a critical shortage of them in our city. The shortage is exemplified by a 51-unit secured market rental project located at King Edward in Columbia that we currently have under construction and that we expect to complete and have ready for occupancy in December of this year. As of this week, where we're just under six months before completion, we have over 400 registrants who would like to live in the building. That's eight people for every one unit that is available. These 51 units will be absorbed very, very quickly into the market, and we expect a similar level of demand for the project under consideration tonight, given its location on transit, near shopping amenities, and in a neighbourhood that's highly desirable to families. The bottom line is that when these rental units are built, they rent very quickly and they almost never become vacant. The people renting them live and work in Vancouver. I also wanted to highlight that, and this was mentioned earlier in the evening, rental housing in our city was not built for a very long time, and the result of that is that there was an extreme amount of pent-up demand. And it all relates back to the, what's the right supply and what's not. And for a long period, the city was building a lot of condominiums and there was no rental being built. Over the last 10 years in varying stages, the market conditions have improved to build rental, and city incentives have come around, and those have kind of gotten developers over the edge to build this housing. But the one thing that I wanted to point out is that market conditions can change, and that over the last two years, we've experienced rapid construction cost inflation, and getting, building rental has become harder. And who knows what the market holds in the future, but if interest rates go up, if construction costs continue to go up, the window to build renting, rental housing can close. And there are slim margins on these projects, and I just wanted to emphasise that, that we need to build these now when the window is open, because we may not be able to in the future, even if city incentives are available. Important to us is that we plan to own this building indefinitely, and we plan to be longstanding and active members of the community. It's our desire to establish roots in the neighbourhood, and that's guided our engagement process throughout the application process with the community. We voluntarily reached out to local establishments such as Sir Charles Tupper High School and the Mount Pleasant Neighbourhood House, and we've gotten involved with important community projects whereby we could lend our support. Beyond this, and in addition to city-led community consultation, we've also met with a number of our neighbours over coffee on a one-to-one basis to hear their opinions and have an open conversation with them about the project. Throughout the application process, we've always made ourselves available to chat about the proposal with members of the community. Overall, this project is a thoughtful development on an arterial street and transit. It conforms to established city policies, and it supports the City of Vancouver's Housing Vancouver Strategy to build 20,000 new purpose-built rental homes over the next 10 years. It's received a considerable amount of community input, but also a considerable amount of community support to see it get built. And overall, it's part of an effort to create new housing for Vancouverites who can afford to purchase a home in this neighbourhood, but who want to live here and who want to be a part of this wonderful community. I ask you tonight to not let perfect be the enemy of good, and thank you, I thank you for your time and consideration this evening, and for all the other public hearings that you, you attend and provide your service to the city. And we look forward to delivering this project and hopefully other rental projects in the future. Thank you.
Thanks very much for coming in and for your comments. Does the staff have any closing comments?
Yes, I'll, staff wanted to thank everybody for coming to speak to council on this application. Just a couple of comments. First about the height, the HC policy allows consideration of a six-story building here. We know that. Two things mentioned about this project presents, I just want to talk about that is a really good typology that the city wants to see in our neighbourhood centres, which is retail facing the street with high ceilings. Okay. It presents a really good typology that the city wants to see in our neighbourhood centres, which is retail facing the front with the higher ceilings and residential floors, and to serve the local neighbourhood. And then at the back, facing the lane, is this double level of townhouses, townhouse units. So that's not only provide a much-needed housing type, but also provides eyes on the, on the lane, activating the lane. So this, this typology exists elsewhere in the city. In fact, it is a very desirable typology that's embedded in the Canby Corridor plan, in our other community plan areas. The height of this six-story building is 71, 71.5 feet, and we know the average in the city for a pure residential six-story building, the average height is 72 feet. So overall, staff believe that this project is a good contextual fit for Fraser Street, which is, as someone pointed out, as wide a street as Kingsway. The last point I wanted to raise is that just, we heard about the call from some of the local residents for a more comprehensive approach to growth in the neighbourhood. And then we have said that in addition to the citywide plan for the future, staff would be very happy to review the service needs in the neighbourhood in the interim and engage with the neighbourhood as well as the correlation, and to, to, to look at the service and amenity in the area that's as part of our DCL review and the capital plan process. And, and just to talk about rental housing, I wanted to have Mr Dan Garrison wrap it up.
Hi, thank you. So I, I'll keep it brief, but the main thing that I wanted to speak to that I heard over the course of the hearing was a concern about the policy itself and whether or not the, the proposal complies, thank you, with the policy. So the affordable housing choices, as was pointed out, interim rezoning policy, has a criteria around affordability, which states that projects must demonstrate an enhanced level of affordability beyond that provided through the delivery of a generally a more, more affordable housing type alone. In 2012, when this policy was adopted, at the same time, it replaced, in fact, council rescinded, a previous policy that was called the Neighbourhood Housing Demonstration Program. The purpose of that program was to allow for demonstration projects to be built in neighbourhoods across the city, which were predominantly single-family neighbourhoods, to provide a different form and to test different forms, like townhouses, for example, where the affordability, the only affordability engendered through that program was the fact that a townhouse form is generally more affordable than a single detached form. Excuse me. So there were no affordability requirements beyond the different form. In 2012, when council adopted this policy and rescinded the other, we wanted to be clear that this was not simply about the form of development or a housing type that's more affordable, but in fact, looking at tenure and other innovations. So that is what is meant by this, an affordability level that can be provided beyond housing type alone. The policy then lists the four categories or criteria that can be applied to meet that definition or the, the criteria of this policy, one of which is, we will consider projects where 100% of the residential floor space is rental housing. So the main thing I wanted to be clear about in terms of this policy is that the fact that this project is, is a project that is 100% rental tenure, does comply with the Affordable Housing Choices interim rezoning policy. In terms of looking at additional affordability, I would say that staff are very keen, and we have heard council's interest in that. We are certainly looking at that and are coming back on the 23rd of July with our rental incentive review. We're looking at several projects through the moderate income rental housing pilot, so it's something that we're really excited about trying to work on as well. In this case, we have looked in great detail with our real estate staff and the applicant at the, at the project financials, and it is very challenging to achieve deeper affordability based on the pro forma in this case. So this project at this point does comply with the policy that it's coming in under. So I wanted to leave it there.
Great. Thank you very much. So where we're at now, at 10 to, 10 minutes to 10, is that we, where we are in the process is we can ask questions to staff, but then we're, get to debate and, or just, we move the motion, then we have debate, and then we make our decision. But I doubt that we're going to get to that by 10 o'clock. So if we don't get to it by 10 o'clock, then we come back on a backup night of July 17th at 6:00 PM. So I'm just going to put it to council now, if, I've got some folks on the list. Councillor Dejanova?
Thanks so much. Just in looking at trying, we were able to finish a committee meeting, actually, yesterday, without having to move it into another night. So I personally would be able to stay, maybe we should stay until 11:00 right now, and I'd be happy to move a motion to extend until 11:00.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and we have a secondary. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and we have a secondary, we don't, we don't, we need a secondary. Yeah, so we're all in favor of staying till 11:00? Okay, so we have to have unanimity here, or else it doesn't go? Just so we know. So, all in favor of staying till 11:00?
And you don't have to, a point of information, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure, if you put your hand up and you have to leave, you can leave, but the meeting would continue. But if you didn't vote for it...
Yep.
Then the meeting would abruptly end at 10:00 p.m., no matter where we were. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to call it then, all in favor of staying until 11:00 to finish this. Thank you very much. Anybody opposed? No, okay, so we've extended a meeting, thanks very much. And is that it, Counselor DeShonova?
That's all.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Hardwick?
Mine was a question of staff.
Okay, so we're on to that now, so please go ahead.
Mr. Garrison, if possible.
Yes.
So thank you for clarifying on the enhanced level of affordability. Yes, I've, I've gone in, it does say that projects that would be considered must meet one of the following affordability criteria, and indeed where 100% of the residential floor spaces rental housing does conform with that. So thank you for that clarification. The second point was the location and form of development, and we've, we've heard various issues around the design performance, and, and do I have a chance also to ask questions of the applicant?
Not of the applicant at this point, sorry.
Okay, well, I'm...
Staff can do the best they can.
So I'll try and tie it into the, the second part, which is the demonstration of a degree of community support, because it seems to me that if there had been more interaction with the community, there might have been some tweaks to this that would have made it a little bit more palatable. But under that second criteria, the location and form of development, can you explain to me how you see that it conforms?
This, to be honest, this, this might actually be another member of the team, is it's mostly the affordability...
Okay, well, thank you for confirming number one, then, and I'll, I'll ask for, for someone else to respond to the second part. Thank you.
So, so under the HC policy, the area, that's, where is my HC policy? I'm just trying to pull that up. So area size affronting Arterial Street, and that is within a 500 meter from a local shopping area, a maximum of six-story may be considered, and this is, this particular site falls under that category.
Okay, even though it, we sort of pushed the seven, so that, that explains the six stories. What about the demonstration of a degree of community support?
I think my, my answer would be the same as, as with last one. I think we, we have certainly consulted with the neighborhood, and with the neighborhood as well as the public, and actually, the, the support versus opposition to this proposal, if you look at the written comments received, is 70% support.
Well, I'd like to put a request then, in that I'd like to see that, because it certainly, the numbers as expressed haven't reflected what I've heard here today, so I'd like to have a closer look at that personally. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Counselor Carr.
Yes, thanks very much. I did actually send my questions in, so I think staff probably have them, but I'm going to go over them. So first of all, council was handed a site selection of the proposal showing seven stories, including the mezzanine. Now, the applicant did talk to this, but my question is really, I, I was there for many of the, well, for all of the changes in the last seven years on Canby Street, and it's true, there were 70-foot, 70, 71-foot buildings, but they all were, as far as my memory serves me correctly, six stories. There was just development or units on six stories. This one has units on seven stories. I like your interpretation, if the seven stories with units on all of them exceeds the six-story limit under this base zoning.
Like to just maybe tell a short story, so to, to, to show how we got here. And this isn't the first project that has come in under this policy or rental 100 policy, where the zoning policy states six stories, and in a certain portion of it, there is technically seven stories. That's been adopted by council in the past before. The reasoning, or I should say, the story of what happened is essentially, it was determined by planning that it would be a really good idea to have a commercial retail unit component in this particular building. When you have a commercial retail unit, the ceiling heights need to be higher than your typical nine feet or 10 feet for a residential unit. We like to see good ceiling heights in commercial retail units. A minimum of 16 feet to 18 feet is what planning likes to encourage. We have seen many, many CRUs built under the C2 zoning, for instance, where there's a 45-foot height limit, and the resulting CRU is often maybe 10 feet, 12 feet, very hard to use, not even considered to be rentable by many places like Starbucks or any typical type of retailer. So we start to specify a certain ceiling height, and this, this actually spurred an innovation by our development community, where they asked the question, well, if you're going to make us do 18-foot-high ceilings at the back of the building, where it's not commercial, but it's residential instead, would it be okay to put in one more floor, and we'll have double-height townhouse-type units on the ground floor? And that's, that's essentially how we got to where we are right now, and it wouldn't be the first time that council, if council adopts this, that council has adopted this kind of typology, when the zoning policy actually states six stories. If you wanted to make it six stories, what would probably happen would be that the applicant would simply take that interstitial story between this first and the second story, take it away, and it would be technically a six-story building. The resulting building height of 71 feet is indeed the kind of heights that we see in six-story buildings, and when there is a commercial retail unit involved in its design. Hope that helps.
Yeah, you, you did, you did explain it. I'm still wondering about the authority to exceed the six stories, but I understand what you said.
It's definitely within council's discretion to interpret the zoning policy where they see fit.
Okay, thank you. It's our authority, in other words. Okay, second question. The program requires transition to single-family, well, a transition, it's supposed to be, whatever the development is, a transition. In this case, it's to single-family areas. And I do note on page six of the report, even though it talks about at the rear, there being a transition in two-story townhouses, it, it, there's a sentence there that bothers me, which reads, "As a result, the southern portion reads as seven stories from the lane." I'm not sure what that meant, and I thought that the townhomes were on, at the lane, so I'm confused.
Maybe a graphic representation would be helpful. Could we pull up the staff presentation at the, that we, that staff showed at the beginning of the public hearing?
As you're pulling it up, because I only have so much time, so as that's pulling up, think about this. Should the Fraser Street number 24 view cone be considered? I, I didn't see any reference around that. We had a speaker...
I can give an answer to that. We consulted with some of our longstanding staff who still remember the history. There was a report that was done by a professional third-party architect when view cones were being entertained for the very first time with the City of Vancouver Planning Department. There were many view cones that were recommended, however, not all of those were actually adopted by council. And so the view cones that are adopted by council are ones that are active and therefore enforced by city staff. The ones that don't, that didn't make the cut, we'll say, aren't actually official policy.
And that's the, the Fraser Street 20, number 24?
That number view cone does not exist as a council adopted view cone.
Okay.
Okay, if I could just flip through, hopefully grab a section of the building to further explain. Please bear with me. There is a section here, I was told. Okay, here's a pretty good one, I think. What you see here is a section of the building, the bottom one is the best way to explain it. You see on the right, on the ground floor, there is a, a nice double-height space that would be usable for the retail unit. That's the bottom graphic to the right. So people would enter in from Fraser Street and enter into a nice lofty-ceilinged commercial retail unit. The retail unit needs to have that high ceiling, because the ventilation, the mechanical ventilation and the structure often takes up a lot of that ceiling space, so that, so that proper ventilation for that kind of use is, is accommodated. On the left side of that same graphic, you can see what's happening is, the, the applicant has proposed an interstitial floor in order to get those particular units, instead of being 20 feet high, to get, to have two stories, each of about nine feet in height. If you count that number of stories on the left-hand side, you will find seven stories, but if you count it on the right-hand side, it's a six-story building. I will clarify as to where that actually occurs, because it doesn't occur everywhere. It only occurs in the half of the building where there are CRUs. You can see on the top graphic to the right, there are no CRUs there, and as a result, it's actually shorter on the right side of the building than to the left on that top graphic. So that double-height space, that double-two-story townhouse space only occurs on that half of the building, at the rear of the building.
Okay, thank you. I think I've gone well beyond my time. I think you started me late.
Okay, thanks for being honest. Okay, thanks. Counselor Boyle?
I don't have questions. I'm, I'm happy to move adoption of the recommendations contained in the report if we're ready for that.
Okay, I don't have anybody else on the list, so we could do that. Move to recommendations. Do I have a secondary? You, Counselor Bly. Okay, so now we'll move to debate. I've got Counselor Boyle on the list, if you want to...
I'll wait.
Okay. Counselor DeShonova?
Thank you. I will be brief. I, I want to first of all, thank and acknowledge all of the people who have come out, not only tonight, but for a previous evening. I understand that this is time that you're spending here and away from other things, your work, your families, your evening. And regardless of if you spoke in support or against the project, I think that it, you know, you certainly helped me to, my apologies, it's been a long few days, few days of council, I'm losing my voice, but definitely, each and every speaker sharing your personal story, it really does help to add context to how this will affect the neighborhood and the context as to how you see your neighborhood. And I'm hoping that as we move forward with citywide plan, we'll be able to engage everyone in that. That being said, with the, the plan currently as it is, or I should say, the lack of plan, maybe for the neighborhood, we are, we have to consider each application here in the context of the policy, and the recommendations that are before us say, do say that it meets a number of the City of Vancouver's policies. I also am, it is, it's not lost on me that we do need more housing, and I, I believe we do need more multifamily residential housing in neighborhoods across Vancouver. I, as I mentioned before, previously lived on Main Street. I've moved farther east since then, but I'm right near the Fraser area. I used to shop on Fraser Street quite often, in exactly the neighborhood that you were describing. That being said, I know that, I have friends who have looked for multi-residential family housing and rental housing and cannot find it in that neighborhood. These rents, I do agree, might not be affordable to everyone and aren't affordable to everyone, but to some of the comments that were made and, and the questions asked by the mayor, when we look at, at the workforce, when we look at individuals who can't live in Vancouver or who have had to leave Vancouver, who grew up in Vancouver, who can't live here anymore, some of them can afford this. So I think we do definitely need to have that conversation about affordability. I'm looking forward to our housing update, which I understand to be later this year, and ways to address that. But right now, we are in a quasi-judicial hearing. I have to consider this in a very certain way. I can't go back and look at the policy right now. I have to ask myself the question as to whether or not this fits in the policy. And I certainly decided this after hearing staff's answers to Counselor Carr's question, and the way that council is interpreting this, and looking at, at sort of the massing, and the way that this is positioned in the neighborhood. For that reason, I will be supporting the project. I think that it, it certainly will offer 121 units of housing in a neighborhood that I'm hoping, I'm, I'm hoping that perhaps this will, can add and contribute to the neighborhood. I also really appreciate and like the amenity space. I think that we see a lot of our rental, rental housing sometimes without that amenity space, and, and the renters will have to use nearby parks, or libraries, or community centers, and there's nothing wrong with that, but I see this going even further, a little bit above and beyond that, in offering some amenity space for families. I want to thank our staff. I know that it definitely is, it's a, it is a lot of work to not only recommend this, but to go through the process with the applicant to bring this to council, and, and as we consider new policy at council, these public hearings aren't lost on me. I certainly do remember each and every one of them. So for that reason, I will be supporting the project, but I do want to say to everyone who came out to speak, to those who are concerned about how this will affect their neighborhood, I hope that maybe you'll, you'll hold out a little bit of hope also for how this might make the neighborhood better, and maybe also I'm remembering and thinking about the people that couldn't come out tonight, to, to, one of the speakers that spoke against this, said that they couldn't, for the same reason, they couldn't go to the open house, and that was because they had a young family, they weren't able to be here in person to speak. We have received correspondence from people who weren't able to be here in person to speak. So for that reason, I will be supporting the project. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Counselor Swanson?
Yes, thanks, everybody, for coming. I think the speaker that is sticking in my mind the most is the woman who said, who talked about what the rents are in the neighborhood and the secondary suites, and that one of her neighbors was renting out rooms in their Vancouver special, because I think that showed what that real affordability crisis is in the city, that people are renting out rooms in a Vancouver special. And to me, as usual, this is an affordability issue. So we have a developer who has a piece of property where he can right now build four duplexes and a shop, a car repair shop, and he can collect rent from all those places. And if we pass this tonight, we'll have a developer who can collect rent from 121 units and a block full of stores and commercial space. As a city with an affordable housing crisis, I think we have a responsibility to capture some of that increased value for the community and for affordability. The manager just, the audience here didn't get it, but I think all the counselors got it, send us a list of occupations and how much each occupation earns, and how many people with those occupations are in the city, and what they can afford. And I added up the ones at the lower level, and there's over 300,000 workers who can't afford even a studio unless they pay more than 50% of their income on rent. So how can we keep saying that we need the right supply and keep building housing that only a very small minority of renters can afford? There's lots of speakers who said that if people move into these rental units, they'll free up other rental units, which will be affordable. But all of my experience is that when people move out of affordable rental units, the rents in those affordable units go up, so we're actually not creating more affordable units, we're reducing the number of affordable units. The development, the developer in this building can charge whatever the market will bear. I don't think this kind of... I don't think this council can move fast enough to change the policies and to use rental-only zoning. Then we can use incentives to increase affordability rather than to ensure that we have rental instead of condo tenure. The property development industry has been out in force to support this proposal. I think we need to push back against that industry. We can't let, we, we have a housing crisis. The solution to that crisis is to get housing out of the market. The more we let developers make profits off of housing, off of our human right to housing, the more we're not going to be able to solve the problem. So in the long run, we need to get lots more federal provincial money, and if they won't give us any money, we need to get them to give us a way of tax, progressive taxation so the city can build housing that everyone can afford. Um, yeah, so I'm gonna have a really hard, I'm not gonna be able to vote for this, uh, even though I totally believe that we should be upzoning single-family zones, and if we can do that and capture some of the value from that for affordable housing, I'll be 1,000% for it.
Thank you councillor Kirby Young.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I wanna thank everybody that participated in the process. It really is very helpful for council, um, as we go through these hearings to inform all of the issues that are, um, top of mind for residents. Um, I will be clear and say that I will be supporting this project, um, but I'd like to articulate, um, some thoughts that I think are important as to why, um, and, uh, and some things that I heard that really stand out. First of all, we need purpose-built rental in the city desperately. This is 121 dedicated purpose-built rental units, including one, two, three and four-bedroom. Um, and I think it's the first one since I've been on council that's actually included four-bedroom, if I'm correct. Um, and so I think that's really important in terms of family development. Um, I also note that, uh, I heard a lot from the community and I really took it to heart around the importance of ensuring amenities go into the community. Um, and we did receive some information from staff about, um, how and where those DCLs or development cost levies, the technical term, get apportioned. So, um, I'm very sensitive as this council has a chance to do a capital plan in our cycle, and there's one done every council with every term, um, that we look to make sure it's going back into the neighbourhood. Um, I particularly note that there's a, it was noted there's a shortage of green space, and I think that's really critical. Um, a lot of people reference that folks unfortunately, um, rental is an option because people can't afford homeownership, but that puts more pressure on amenities, which means we need more parks and green space. So that's something, um, I'm definitely gonna take away for those, uh, capital plan discussions and make sure we are investing in the amenities that are needed. Um, the other thing that, um, I am pleased about, and I think was a bit different about this development, a bit unique, is the opportunity to support small business. Because with the commercial retail units being 35 feet instead of 50, um, and having a shallower depth, it's going to lend itself to certain specific type of tenants, which I'm intrigued by. And I like the fact, um, that there's a, sort of a design element of role outdoors that I think provides a nod to the previous tenants in Alex Automotive. Um, I, I, I don't think council, you know, wants to get into amendments on this, but I'd really like, um, staff and the applicant to kinda hear my comments that, um, I really do think there's an opportunity to integrate the Alex Automotive sign, um, either, and do something that's a nod to the past, 'cause while it might not be classified as heritage, it is part of the history, um, of the site and the neighbourhood and where we come from. And I think that's, um, particularly important, that adds character to our neighbourhoods. I think that's always a benefit. Um, and if that can be done through the sign or as well as through the public art discussion, which I look forward to, 'cause I sit on the public art committee, um, I'd encourage that. But I'm really, um, pleased with the opportunity to see local serving businesses. Um, I was struck by one of the speakers who said that the growth, um, in the neighbourhood has been positive and has actually enhanced the neighbourhood, enhanced walkability. We're actually striving to build complete communities, um, and that's really important. Um, so I think that's something that we wanna strive for too. And I think, you know, if I was gonna sum it up, um, in some additional comments, and I appreciate the fact as well that one of the conditional, like, conditions of approval is the enhanced amenity space, and so it was confirmed that it's not 800 square feet, and I always think it's nice to sort of state things, um, that it'll go up to 1,400. Um, and the fact that these are purpose-built rental, which is really needed, um, we've had a lot of discussion around confirming the scale and height. But really, at the end of the day, if I, I will sort of close by referencing is that I have a different perspective than some of my other councillors' comments that say, um, it's not beneficial for people moving out of rental units, um, for them to free up other ones, or we can't not put affordable units in, because if we follow that philosophy and time stands still, we have no more units and no ability to accommodate our kids, people that are moving in, et cetera. So we can't just stand still and have everybody stay in place in the unit that they are. People evolve, they have kids, um, we have more folks coming into the neighbourhood. Um, I go back to the speaker too, from an econ- economy perspective. Um, the person that spoke from Hootsuite that talked about the fact that, um, it's very hard to keep or attract talent if we don't have supply. So it's not an either-or, it's about having all of them. Everybody knows that we need the affordable housing, but that doesn't preclude that we need to build different types of housing, um, such as this, that fits, um, a market niche. So I will close by saying I'm supporting, um, the, uh, project for the reasons that I have stated, and that if, uh, we are not, if not here, where? Um, and if not now, when? And I think that we need to continue to do that. I do really appreciate the fact that we are in, um, a challenging time with not having the citywide plan, and I think a lot of the folks that came here tonight are gonna have some really valuable perspective to contribute to that plan. Um, and I think the challenge that we have is not having that certainty for people around what type of density or what type of zoning or what, um, what we have to kind of come together as a city and determine how are we going to grow. Um, so I'm looking forward to that conversation. I think this is really underscoring the need for the citywide plan. And, and I'll also just mention quickly, one of the comments from somebody actually signed the petitions actually, I think, supports that point. I'm signing because I wanna live in a neighbourhood that has many small independent businesses and is walkable.
And they were at five.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Councillor Bly?
Thank you very much, and, uh, it's getting late, so I will, um, keep my comments, but really do echo a lot of what councillor Kirby Young, um, has shared. So one thing that I will touch on, because it became quite a, um, conversation on night one, was around school capacity, and I think at the end of the day, so I'm speaking in support of this project, um, I think at the end of the day, it is a really important relationship that we have with the Vancouver School Board, and we may not really engage at this stage as actively or as proactively as we can. So what I'm happy about, and I've heard from staff, is that, um, there's space in Florence-Nightingale Elementary and General Brock Elementary. They're not the catchment schools, but they're less than two kilometres away from this development. And that was a major concern that I heard from people, and now we know that we've got some answers to that. So I think that that's significant. And then, of course, search holes. Tupper is lots of space, and that is the catchment high school. So I think that really does address a major issue that we heard from people. Um, I, you know, there's retail, there's 101 units, uh, people in Vancouver we've established can't afford to live here, not everybody, but some can. I have a 19-year-old, I would like her to move out one day. Um, so, and she would like to move out one day, more importantly. So, and she worries about where she's gonna go. So, you know, that, that really is an issue, and I hope communities will invite and welcome new people into their communities with open arms, because really that does, that is what Vancouver is all about, and I know change is hard. Um, it's on an arterial, there's $2.4 million in DCLs that we have heard from staff about how that could be used. Uh, we've verified the scale and, and the setbacks. The things that, uh, are, are difficult to reconcile is that, um, the immediate homes will be impacted. The immediate homes will be impacted, and we've heard you. And that is a huge consideration, uh, 'cause that level of change is difficult for people that are immediately impacted. Um, in that the community doesn't have a community plan and clearly has an engaged, lively community. And so that also is an opportunity that we need to address, citywide plan, but just, I think, from today onwards, that, that there is a community there, even if they don't have a plan. So, um, I think that's really important. And then I think at the end of the day, we're seeing that the process is challenging, some of the policies are nuanced, and that can be always left up to interpretation. And so I'm, I have a lot of confidence that we're all very engaged and want to move towards an outcome that makes this process work for everybody, and I really look at staff and see that there's a huge amount of, uh, willingness and commitment to make that happen. So, um, for those reasons, I think I'll close in that, in, in one part, I agree with councillor Swanson, as a city with an affordability crisis, we have a responsibility. And that is to actually build something. So that is, um, where I see that dovetails, and, and we may always see differently in that regard, um, but I do think that we need to add supply, and we've heard that loud and clear. Uh, so thank you, I'll be supporting.
Thanks, uh, councillor Carr.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Stewart. Uh, first of all, I wanna echo the thanks, um, to everyone who came to speak and, um, and to our staff. You answered my questions well, um, I, I, you know, particularly around the transition and the building height and the rationale for, for all of that, so I really, I really appreciate that. I was very much struck by one of the speakers who, um, actually, uh, said that we should be worried about scaring away development. And why it struck me is that I thought, you know, that's not the mindset for rational decision-making, being afraid of something not happening. I think the rational line, mindset is about aligning your decision with your values, the goals and the policies. Um, so for me, it's ensuring that a project does meet our policies, um, that it has public support, and that it meets public needs. And in this case, the public need is so clear to me, is for affordable housing that really is affordable for the people who need it within this city, who need it the most within this city, in this case, the renters. Um, the, um, but there's no doubt to me that, um, uh, this particular program that this has come under requires that the project must demonstrate a degree of community support. When that project, when that program came in, and I was a councillor at the time, um, there was no public, uh, none, no public consultation. It was brought in at the end of a report from the mayor's task force on housing affordability. And so for me, I feel very strongly that demonstrated public support now is incredibly important, because the program itself didn't have it at that time. There was no sense of public support. Um, so I look to a key being, that public, um, that public support at the current time. Um, and for me, it's coupled with the idea of neighbourhood fit, and so local neighbour, local public support is also incredibly important. In terms of contextual fit, you know, I know, I know that there is, there's certainly some, and the stores along the street, that's great, but the neighbours are saying, "This doesn't fit. It doesn't fit in our neighbourhood. The height, it's too high, um, it's, you know, it's, um, it's overshadowing," you know, all of those, um, comments that have been made. The goal of, um, the particular policy that this is being brought under is innovative projects to be tested for wider application. That's, that was the goal. So I've been questioning, what's the innovation in this project? And it was interesting, staff responded to my question around that to say, "Well, at the time that this policy was brought in, there was not a lot of rental housing being built." And so I, so I get that. I get that historically that this, that just 100% rental was innovative, but it's, we're in 2019, it's not innovative anymore. This is not, to me, moving this policy forward in this current time, um, uh, it, it isn't meeting that, that, that rational sort of, "Let's do something very, very innovative here." Um, it's interesting that the policy also requires spacing requirements, no more than two projects in 10 blocks, and it's true, it does that. There's no other project within 10 blocks. But I think the intent around that too, in my mind, is, is the kind of pace of change and introduction of building types within a neighbourhood. I was so struck by the, by the speaker who listed like 11 rezonings in this immediate area with over 1,200 units. That's incredible pace of change. I think we have to pay attention to that and, and, uh, um, what impact that that has on a neighbourhood, both in terms of replacing currently affordable housing and just loss of local retail stores, uh, at the same time that have served public, local needs. Um, and finally, I get to affordability. The program states there must, and we've said it a few times here, "Must demonstrate enhanced level of affordability beyond that provided through the delivery of a generally more affordable housing type alone." To me, that means enhanced beyond just 100% rental housing. And it's clear, studios, one 1,500, one bedrooms 2,000, et cetera. I sifted the calculations, a $2,000 a month rent for a one-bedroom at 30% of income, household income affordability, and it's actually gross income, not net, um, requires an $80,000 income. A $2,600 rent for a two-bedroom?
We're just at five.
104,000. The median renter income in Vancouver is 43,000. It's not gonna work. I'm, so I will not be supporting.
Hey, councillor Boyle?
Um, thanks, I'll be really brief, because it's late, um, uh, and, um, what I have to say is similar to what I have to say on many secure rental, um, uh, projects. I think we need more secure rental in this city. Renters deserve, um, the security to know that they're gonna have a home six months down the road, uh, and particularly renters who are, um, families, renters who are seniors, renters, uh, renters across the board deserve that kind of stability. We don't have enough secure rental, uh, homes for them, um, and we clearly need more. Um, and in particular, one of the, um, pieces that I use to navigate decisions around new rentals is the, is the amount of displacement. I know that's a conversation we have a lot, um, and this is a 121-unit building without displacing other secure renters. Um, I think it really matters that we build new rental, secure rental where there isn't rental stock already, otherwise we're just building it where we're displacing current renters. And so, uh, and so I think this is an important project. Of course, it won't solve the housing crisis, um, but it will help, uh, and, and that's the kind of conversation we need to be having as we're looking at policy changes that we as a council can make to push the envelope even further. Uh, I don't think that we, um, get ourselves in the right direction by, um, rejecting projects along the way, uh, that provide security for people who need it. Um, I, I really appreciated one of our speakers talking about, um, new neighbours contributing to the neighbourhood, not as a burden for a neighbourhood to bear, uh, but, um, as a, as an added value, that, uh, neighbours are part of what build the character and value of our neighbourhoods. Um, and so, uh, it's important to welcome them, so supportive.
Thank you councillor Dominado.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and like my colleagues, I'll keep my comments brief. Um, but I do, I just wanna start with, uh, thanking all of the residents who came out to speak in the last number of days, and obviously a number are still here, um, as well as the staff and the carrying out the work around this proposed development. Um, I, I do, I wanna start with, um, the fact that when I look at these, uh, proposals, I do put it up against, um, the current policy, and that is the policies we are working with today. Uh, and acknowledging that we actually have our staff undertaking a review of our rental policies, and that will be coming back to us, but, um, in terms of governance, we have to work with the policies we have today. Um, I think that, um, and one of the things that I did hear, uh, through some of the, the residents who do come and speak was, uh, the fact that, um, that this neighbourhood doesn't have a formalized neighbourhood plan as we see in some other neighbourhoods. It does have a vision, uh, there's, are the policies we're working within. And, um, I recognize that's challenging, uh, and I actually think it speaks to the importance of why this council, uh, uh, passed unanimously, um, a motion, uh, brought by councillor Carr to undertake a citywide plan, and, uh, to, uh, undertake planning that will involve and look at all of our neighbourhoods, involve all of our residents, um, and thinking about not just today, but the future. Now, that being said, I don't think it's a panacea either, um, but I do think, um, we need to, um, uh, build trust and work with the community, and I think that that will help inform, uh, future proposals. I do wanna speak to the issue of this, um, being a rental project. People have already said it loud and clear, we, we have incredibly low vacancy rate. We know, I think some, one speaker said there's a pent-up demand, um, as councillor Boyle pointed out, that, um, it's a secure rental, there's a covenant on it, um, and I, I think we cannot deny that need and more, and more than 50% of our residents are actually renters. And we had a speaker speak about, uh, the value of, of this for young millennials, but as well for seniors who may be wanting to downsize, uh, from their home, homes. And then on the subject of affordability, uh, at the end of the day, we, we need to recognize that these are, are market rentals, and, um, there is, um, very clearly from, um, what we've, we just actually just, there was a rental project that just opened down the street, uh, near our home, and I understand, uh, at the time we asked about that, and, uh, it was full immediately. There is a demand, and there are professionals, there are people working, and the mayor's talked about this, about working professionals in the city, uh, teacher, nurse, partners, um, there is a demand for... is a demand for this. And I can tell you, I went out and I door-knocked and main-streetered during the campaign all over the city, and I heard loud and clear the need for a diversity of housing choices in the city. And I actually heard there was a woman who wrote in this evening who lives in East Vancouver, who's talked about, you know, she says her grown children can't afford to purchase a property here, but they could absolutely pay market rent and continue to live where they grew up. And she actually thinks that the commercial space and increased densification will actually have the possibility of energizing the neighborhood, not diminishing it. And I saw that as a positive. And there was also a speaker this evening who spoke from, although he said that he was representing Hootsuite, but he pointed to the benefit of having more supply to be able to support employees and workers who are coming to the city. And so I think that's another consideration. Certainly, I think there is always going to be, even when we have a citywide plan in place, I think there is always going to be a tension between the consideration of that broader need of housing supply and diversity of housing, and how that butts up with neighborhoods and the character of neighborhoods and how that fits. And I think that is a challenge we have to grapple with, and you've elected us to make these decisions. But with that, I am very supportive of the proposal. I do appreciate the fact that there is family-oriented units within it. I appreciate the inclusion of townhomes as well, as well as the retail component, because I do think that that adds to the complete neighborhoods that we talk about and the walkability. And so I'm supportive of the project. But I do want to again acknowledge, you know, there are diverse perspectives on this, and respectful of those, and that, you know, not everyone's going to be happy with potentially a decision this evening. But I would want to thank everyone who came out this evening.
Thanks very much. Councillor Weeb?
Yes. I agree with councillor Carr on components that this is a tough policy, and the innovative side of it always challenges me, because this is supposed to be something that we can replicate going forward, the citywide plan, and come up with really creative ways to find new ideas to implement extra density into neighborhoods. I do want to challenge, I will be supporting, I think that there's enough of the elements of this building that work. I think that the creativeness of the commercial, the residential, the way the building feels split, the transition down to the homes, I think they did do a good job. I do want to challenge that I do think that the rooftop amenities space needs to be larger with community urban garden, because we want happy people living in this building that really help the neighborhood. I think that's a great opportunity here. The views from there will be spectacular. And there's a few buildings that have come into my area, and the ones that have good community space really have happy residents, and people want to be there. And it really adds to the neighborhood. So I think let's make some happy tenants in the building if this goes forward. And I think by having an amazing community urban garden would be a start. I think that using the public art component to really showcase the heritage and try to incorporate as much of the original garage idea, I know that there's rolling gates, but I think in the DP process, there's a lot of work that we can do to really amp that up. I think to really kind of push that innovation and really showcase to projects moving forward what can be done. And the third one for me is, it does talk about continuing to demonstrate the ability to maximize level of affordability. And I hope that, I know that this developer talked about being really involved in the community, and I hope that they can do, if they do find efficiencies, that they can find ways to really deliver to the community and showcase to council and the rest of the city that when projects are done right, we can support the neighborhood in different ways. And I know that there's work been done with schools, and I think that there's more to be done. And I'm excited that this does have DCLs of significant amount, and the 400 or 340,000 in parks can help go fix Grace Park and the childcare component. So this will help deliver more to the community, and so we'll be supportive.
You, councillor Hardwick.
Thanks, everybody. So, starting with the policy, I believe this is a flawed policy. I would echo what councillor Carr said, that the original intent was around innovation, and we are well past that. Everybody knows that we need rental housing in this town, but this particular policy comes with a series of incentives from the city to encourage further rental development. But it's not a binary choice. Do we have rental housing or not? It's a question of what someone, I can't remember who it was, said, if done properly. And I think if this had been done properly, it would have responded to the second criteria, which is demonstration of a degree of community support, which I do not feel that that criteria has been made or met. Now, if, you know, if this had come in a little bit lower, with maybe 100 suites, I think it would have gotten closer to where it would have been acceptable to the neighbors. But that wasn't done. So we don't unfortunately have the opportunity to send it back to the drawing board and say, can you, you know, downscale this a little bit to be more in keeping with the neighborhood and more attractive as a component to the neighborhood. So it's a real tough situation to be in. Not good policy, not affordable. Yeah, we want additional rental housing, but it's, we seem to be cutting a lot of corners in the policy to shoehorn this in. Ultimately, you know, it's like, are we going to build anything because it's rental housing, even if it doesn't fit into a neighborhood, just because we need? I mean, there's just so much rationalization to me that I'm hearing at this that really frustrates me in trying to make a decision. So ultimately, I'm not going to support this. I may be in the minority. I have a fundamental problem with the policy. I don't think the policy has been met, in particular, in sensitivity to the neighborhood. I think it could have been tweaked and brought down a little bit in scale and still created enough rental housing to make the numbers work, but it hasn't. So for those reasons, I will not support this project. Thank you.
Thanks. I put myself on the list. Standing up here, I'm looking at one model that's to scale, apparently. And what I was thinking of was, we need another model, which is what happens if this one doesn't get built. And what I think is that if I was a developer who'd bought these properties up, I would do what's allowed there, which is duplexes. And those duplexes would sell for about a million and a half each, and that means you'd need an income of about $335,000 around there a year to afford them, plus a down payment of $300,000. And I'm a renter, and as your mayor, I could not afford that. So the mayor of Vancouver could not afford the alternative to what's being proposed here, which I think is kind of insane. So I'll happily support this, because what I heard, and thank you to staff for sending us along, is that the elementary school teachers who live in this area can afford some of those units. The teachers that live in the area, the nurses, we, only 16% of our police live in the city. So they can live in there. Firefighters can live in there. Tradespeople. And that's what we need to build. And I think those are the kind of people that make great neighbors. They're the kind of people that are the whole city. The tech, we heard from Hootsuite, this is, you know, we're an emerging knowledge economy. Microsoft president the other day told me his workers make $90,000 a year. They can live in here. And I don't really buy into the false choice of the median income in the city. That includes, for example, residents of the downtown east side. It's the entire city. But when we look at this neighborhood, it's actually quite a wealthy neighborhood. And the median income in these neighborhoods is around $75,000. So they can actually, not the bottom half of the median, but the top half can actually rent this. So, I mean, I really think as we go forward as a council, we really have to think about the neighborhood in a couple of ways. And we have to build rental housing, because I think this will invigorate the neighborhood. I think that the commercial space will be welcome. You know, I used to live in a building quite like this, that had similar houses right behind it. That was great. We got to know everybody, and it was really nice. And, you know, I could rent, and they could own, but we could have a great neighborhood. So I'll be supporting this, because I think it is a good project. I'm really thankful for the builders are putting this forward to really, you know, taking all the harsh criticism and taking the risk that these projects, you know, entail. And I can't wait till the doors open, and we have folks renting in there that are, and then I think the whole community will be happy with it. So thanks to everybody for coming out tonight, but I do think that this is a great project, and I'll be supporting it. I don't see anybody else on the speakers' queue, so I do have to ask councillors about whether or not, if you missed sections of the hearing, did you review tapes or documents? Councillor Kirby Young, Dejanova, and Dominado? Right. So did you have a chance to review the parts of the hearing that you missed? Is that, maybe I'll go. Yeah, sure, if you'd like to. Yep.
Yes, I did. In fact, I not only did that, but I notified the clerk when I got here, that I hooked it up to my phone in my car on the way here.
Okay.
From my last event that ended at 6:00.
Okay, great, thanks. And councillor Dominado? Okay, thanks. And councillor Kirby Young? Yes. Okay, great. So with that, we'll call a vote on this one. For councillor Hardwick. There we go. Okay, so that's passed with councillor Carr, councillor Spontan, and councillor Hardwick in opposition. Thank you so much. Okay, so probably people don't want to go on to the next application, so. Want to keep going? All right. Thanks, then. So we're on to rezoning, application 6A on 49th Avenue.
This is an application by Bosa Properties Incorporated to rezone 749815 West 49th Avenue from RS1 District to RM8A District to permit a townhouse development with an FSR of 1.2. The form of development will be reviewed through a subsequent development permit process. Since referral to public hearing, council has received one piece of correspondence in opposition to the application. This represents all correspondence received up to approximately 5:00 PM today.
Great. Thanks very much. We have Lisa Dejarly?
Lisa Dejarly.
Yeah, that's right. Thanks very much, regional planner. And this is another series of...
Correct.
Right. And so, did you want to present, or do you want to waive the application?
Mr. Mayor, staff are prepared to make a presentation. However, there are no concerns about these projects, and if it is the preference of council, this presentation can be waived.
Okay. Okay, have a move to waive. Second. Okay, all in favor? Right, okay, thanks very much. We'll waive it. I don't think we needed a vote, but what the hey. Great, applicant team here to speak?
Nope.
Right, applicant team, thanks very much. Did you want to say anything, or just wait for questions? Thank you very much. Any questions from council to staff or the applicant? I have a queue here, councillor Dejanova?
No.
Any question?
Sorry, I was on to wave.
I'm sorry?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Oh, I just wanted, are there any questions? That's what I was asking. And I cancelled Dejanova on the list. No questions. Councillor Weeb, you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question to staff that maybe I can get followed up later, is that it doesn't have natural assets. And I wonder if we could add historical context as well, so just in case we know what the historical component or property is when we get these applications in the future. Thank you.
Yes, currently, we don't have that, and we can be adding that to future reports.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much. And so that's it for questions from council to staff in this round anyway. So don't have any speakers on the list, so I'm going to call three times if anybody would like to speak to this application. Going once, going twice, going three times. Thanks very much. So seeing there are no speakers, the speakers' list is now closed. As few or no public comments are received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comments and move on to closing comments. Does the applicant have any closing comments? No, thanks very much. Staff, closing comments?
No, sir.
Okay, thanks. Questions for staff? I have councillor Dejanova on the list. Oh, okay. Great. So can we, I guess, I don't see any questions, so if somebody wants to move this. Thank you. A second there. Thank you, councillor Carr. And is there any debate? Have councillor Dejanova on the list? No?
No, happy to support this application and appreciate the report. It was very thorough, so I don't have any questions. But happy to see more townhomes being built, considering the previous reports of staff and our housing updates specifically saying that what we were hearing back from residents, or potential residents even, was that there was a lack of townhomes on the market.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. Don't see anybody else on the list, so we can call There we go. So that's passed unanimously. Thank you, council. We're going on to, where are we now? 6A, we're on 6B, which is the rezoning on West 47th and Oak Street.
This is an application by Alabaster Homes to rezone 1008 West 47th Ave. and 63356363 Oak Street from RS1 District to RM8AN District to permit a townhouse development with an FSR up to 1.2. The form of development will be reviewed through a subsequent development permit process. Since referral to public hearing, council has received one piece of correspondence in opposition and two pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thanks very much. And we have you again from planning staff. Did you want to go ahead and present or wave?
No, sir.
Okay, thanks very much. Applicant team here? Yes. Did you want to present anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I do know it's extremely late. I do appreciate all of you extending. I won't take a lot of time, given that it's been a long one. I know I've been sort of eight hours in the wings to get here. So this is straightforward. I just did want to bring two quick things to your attention. This is a simplified rezoning process for family-friendly townhouses. The principal purpose statement, if you're following along on the report, could be found on page four. I'm referring to section one, simplified rezoning process. The fifth paragraph, its intent is principally to give the city a prerogative to secure servicing upgrades off-site. And we understand that. The question I have, and this is more of a nudge to council, to nudge staff, is I wonder if, with a view to delivering the family-friendly townhouses, there might be a way to go more executive to a development application with a voluntary servicing agreement to then have the developer pay for offsites directly, which is effectively what's happening here anyways. That would sort of shave off about six months of process and a hearing and all that sort of thing. The other piece I wanted to describe is the utilities themselves are somewhat complicated in terms of the DCLs. So we went through with engineering staff, and they were very helpful in this process. We've kind of arrived through our private consultants to get a costing of the offsite utilities. We were a little surprised that we would then pay the DCL utility fee, given that we're funding the offsites directly. So we then thought, okay, logically, we might get to a place of having a front-end agreement, but we weren't offered that either. So this is a slight point of concern, just in the sense of adding additional cost to this sort of project, which we understand will bear, but ultimately that somewhat stands at odds with the idea of delivering the family townhouse paradigm. So we wondered, I guess, if there might be a way to convince staff to consider a front-end agreement, because otherwise, it seems that we might be paying twice for the utilities, given there's no waiver of the DCL utility. There's a direct cost, and there's no front-end agreement for recuperation over time, if that makes sense. I'll leave my comments there if you have any questions. But that's all I have for now. And thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Dejanova. Do you have a question?
Thank you very much. Yes, I do. Just hearing this right now from the applicant, you're, the applicant, you're representing the applicant?
I'm representing the applicant. I'm from Alabaster Homes.
Okay. So I know you wanted things to be more efficient, and you spoke about that being the reason. I would actually likely, and I understand what you're saying, but because we're in a quadcyd judicial hearing, and there is a way of doing things, I will ask our staff if that right now is possible, or if there's a way to consider that. ask our staff if that right now is, is possible, or if there's a way to consider that. If not, I would be inclined to likely refer
Yep.
your project back to staff, which would take more time. So I'm, I'm asking you if that was the case, because after I ask staff a question, I'm not able to ask you a question again. If I hear from staff, that's going to hold your project up and take a longer amount of time. Do you want me to refer your project back to staff for consideration for that, or would you prefer to move forward with the recommendations as they appear before us?
Okay, so let me trace back my steps, and I thank you very much for that position.
I understand that. I've worked, I've worked in the development industry.
So we're happy to move this one forward, but the context of my remark was for a possibility in a future timeframe for council to nudge staff to take these concerns I've raised into consideration, but possibly not in the context of standing in the way of this one moving forward, if that makes sense.
It does, but are you asking for council to consider this as a policy issue, or are you considering council to consider this for this specific project?
As a policy issue raised, but not for this specific project.
So right now, I can only, it's my understanding.
Correct. And I understand that.
I asked the mayor to rule on it, but I can't, I don't think council is allowed to consider policy issues other than the ones that are before us and the specific projects that are before us tonight.
Absolutely fair. Understood.
We could refer it, and that's why I was asking. I was asking if you wanted us to refer it, or if you just wanted to suggest to council. I'm trying to understand what you were saying.
Okay, so.
Are you suggesting council take this up at a later date?
Yes.
And consider this as a part of the policy?
Correct.
But not, not for this project? You're happy with the recommendations staff have made?
We have to move forward as, as is, so this is a suggestion for future consideration.
Okay, so knowing that this quasi-judicial body?
We are kind of closing at 11:00, so.
Okay. So I, I then will end at 11:00, the meeting ends. I'm, I'm not sure. I don't see anyone else on the queue. I know you have to call for speakers, so I'm good. Now that I understand you don't want us to refer it and pass it as is, it's good to know that. Thank you.
Thanks. Any comments from staff? Any questions to, sorry, any questions to staff from, any other questions to staff? Nope, okay. So I'm going to call for speakers. Do we have any speakers to this one? Going once, going twice, going three times. Don't see any speakers, so having few or no comments received after 5:00 PM, I suggest we close the receipt of public comments. Applicant have any closing comments? It's not. Staff have any closing comments?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Council have any questions? Don't see any. Okay, so Counselor Dejanova, do you want to move this?
I'm, I'm, yes, happy to move the recommendations as they stand in the report.
Great, thanks very much. Seconder, Counselor Hardwick. Awesome. Let's call the vote. Counselor Dejanova, need you to vote there. Great, that's passed. Thanks very much. On to the next one. Go ahead, clerk.
This is an application by Alabaster Homes to rezone 930 West 49th Avenue and 6525 Fremland Street from RS1 District to RM8A District to permit a townhouse development with an FSR up to 1.2. The form of development will be reviewed through a subsequent development permit process. Since referral to public hearing, council has received one piece of correspondence in opposition and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to approximately 5:00 PM today.
Thanks very much. And staff like to present, or are you going to waive it?
Nope. No, thank you, sir.
Thanks very much. Applicant team here? Okay. Would you like to say a thing, or just questions? Thanks very much. Okay. Any questions from council, the staff, or the applicant? Don't see any. Great. Okay, now hear from the public. Would anybody like, we haven't got anybody on the list, but would anybody else like to speak to this? I'm sorry, one speaker on the list. I missed that. Salim Kosovich? Okay, great. Sorry, sir, I didn't see the list there. Sure?
Mr. Mayor, I'm aware that we're at 10:54 PM, and we have one speaker, or potentially more, but one speaker signed up. I would like to move to extend to hear from speakers and for debate and decision on this item.
Okay, thanks. We need a, yeah, we have, we have two more, we have two more after this.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Yes, yes, yes. But understanding this is the only speaker we have signed up.
Right.
At least for this speaker, and then we could, we could.
If we went, I bet you if we went to 11:15, we could get it all done.
Okay, so I'd like to move to extend to 11:15, and just asking a point of information. That does mean that anyone who needs to leave can do so, but they would need to vote in favor for us to stay.
That's right. We need unanimity here.
Great, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. So we've got a mover and a seconder, Counselor Kirby Young, all in favor of extending to 11:15. Anybody opposed? Great, thanks very much. Go ahead, sir, up to five minutes.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, respected mayor and councilors. I live in the block where this proposed development is, so I'm at 938 West 49th Avenue. The house is going to be squeezed between a new development and a church, and a whole bunch of new developments that are going down Oak Street on the, on the east side of Oak. There are a lot of rezoning applications in that area. In general, I'm not against the densification and rezoning if it's planned properly and if it's done right, as someone said here. The townhomes, yes, we need family-friendly townhomes, as the gentleman said, but who can afford them? These will be 2 million townhomes. These will be luxury townhomes in the area. Who can afford them? Please raise your hand. I've lived in this house for 17 years. I lived in Vancouver for 27 years. We lived three generations in the house, so grandparents and kids together. And we enjoy our front yard. We enjoy our backyard. It will not be happening during the construction. There will be a lot of noise. There will be a lot of dust, and we will be an orphaned lot. So in general, as I said, I am for densification. We need to move for affordable housing. This will not be affordable housing. And yet, a family who pays $1,000 a month for property tax will suffer for years of construction. And then after that, instead of one neighbor, they'll have hundreds of neighbors down Oak Street. As I said, there's already a couple of rezoning applications up Oak Street, northbound as well. Everything is developing around. Does it have to be at the same time, all of it? Especially if there is a lot that's squeezed, that's orphaned, just because, you know, a company can, you know, apply for all of these rezonings. They've just finished the project down on Park and Oak, 100% sold. They have new ones. Does it have to be this one as well? And then there will be a problem with, with the back lane during the construction. If all of these rezonings are approved in the, on Oak and West 49th, the corner of Oak and West 49th, there'll be a lot of trucks and heavy machinery in our back lane. We are already stuck when we are getting out of our back lane, because we can't get on Oak, because it's busy, and there are a lot of trees, and we can't see what's coming northbound. There is a lineup every morning of cars from Fremland Street to 49th, trying to get merged into the traffic. What's going to happen when heavy machinery is there? We will not be able to get out of our, of our driveways and garages. So I'm asking everyone to reconsider whether you need to approve all of these applications at once, or kind of think, okay, this one is orphaned. Maybe let's, let's leave it for now, because there are not the 10, there are not the 10 in the neighborhood. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. And there's no questions for you. I appreciate you coming in and staying so late this evening. Thank you. So now I'm going to call if there's any other speakers that are not on the list. Once, twice, three times. Thanks so much. So seeing there are no speakers, the speakers list is now closed. So seeing there is no comments received after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments and asking further questions. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just thank you for extending. Thank you for a long night, and we appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Staff have any closing comments?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Council have any questions? I don't see any on the list. Can we have a mover for this? Thank you, Counselor Kirby Young, seconded by Counselor Dom Dejanova? Yeah, okay. Any debate on this? I don't see anybody on the list. Oh, Counselor Bly?
Yeah, just, just wanting to acknowledge the speaker that's also stayed late to speak to this project, and appreciate that you are going to be right beside the development, and that is always a consideration, and appreciate you coming and sharing your thoughts with us.
Great, that's nice. Thank you. Anybody else? No, if not, we'll call the vote then, please. Counselor Dominado? There we go. That's passed. Thank you very much. Clerk on to 6D.
This is an application by Shape Architecture to rezone 6808-6888 Ash Street from RS1 District to RM8A District to permit a townhouse development with an FSR up to 1.2. The form of development will be reviewed through a subsequent development permit process. Since referral to public hearing, council has received one piece of correspondence in opposition, and this represents all correspondence received up to approximately 5:00 PM today.
Thanks very much. And would the staff like to waive their presentation?
No presentation, sir.
Thank you very much. Applicant team here? Yes, would you like to speak, or just respond to questions? Thank you very much. Any questions from council, the staff, or the applicant? Counselor Weep?
Just a quick question. We have two projects that go back to back, and it's a four-block section. I'm wondering, do we look for walkways through so that this community can be better connected with the park? Because it seems like we're developing a four-block section that has zero connections to transit or to green space.
My name's John Turecki from Transportation. So as part of the first project, I believe, on this list, there is a stationary right-of-way through the north end of the property to connect between Ash Street and Camby.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, thanks. Don't see any other questions, so now hear from the public. I don't have anybody on the list, so I'll call for speakers three times. Don't see anybody once. Don't see anybody twice. And third time. Thanks very much. Seeing there are no speakers, we'll close the list now. So I suggest now we close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments. The applicant have any closing comments? Nope, thank you. Staff?
No, sir.
Thank you. Council have any questions? Don't see any. Okay, thanks. So can I have a mover for the motion? Okay, Counselor Bly, Counselor Kirby Young seconded. And any debate? I don't see anybody on the list, so we'll call the vote on this one. And there we go. Where that's passed unanimously. Thanks very much. Last one, Ash Street. Just let the clerk read that one.
This is an application by Shape Architecture to rezone 6908-6968 Ash Street from, and 575 West 54th Avenue from RS1 District to RM8A District to permit a townhouse development with an FSR up to 1.2. The form of development will be reviewed through a subsequent development permit process. Since referral, council has received one piece of correspondence in opposition, and it represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thank you very much. Got to waive it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Applicant team here as well? Would you like to, okay, just answer questions? Thanks very much. Any questions from anybody? I don't see anybody on the queue, but give you a chance here. Nope. Okay, so nobody on the list to speak, so I'll call three times. Anybody's in the lobby? Once, twice, three times? Okay, there's no speakers, so we'll close the list, and we'll close the comments now. And the applicant have any closing comments? No, thanks. Staff, any closing comments?
No, sir.
Thank you. Does council have any questions? Don't see any, so can I have a mover? Counselor Boyle, Counselor Carr, seconded. And any debate on this one? Don't see any debate, so I'll call the vote. And Counselor Carr's, Dejanova's absent, so that's passed unanimously. Thank you very much. I think that's it for tonight. So can I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Counselor Bly, Counselor Dominado seconded, all in favor of adjourning. Anybody opposed? We're good. Okay, thank you very much, everybody. We did it.